All right, I'd like to call the Sherburne School Committee meeting for February 9th, 2016 to order at, we'll say, 6:33. And before we get started, I just want to let everybody know, first of all, thank you all for coming, but just so you know, there are actually, there are ambient mics up in the ceiling and in the back. So, if, two things, if one, if when you're having little side conversations, there's a possibility it could get picked up, so I'm going to encourage you or request that you try not to speak amongst yourselves at least very quietly if you do. And also, later on, I'll explain this, but when you do choose to speak, if you could stand up and speak loudly so that those viewing audience can also hear, that would be great. Appreciate it. We're going to start with the CSA report. We have Angie Johnson.
Hi. So, I'm here on behalf of CSA at Pine Hill, and we've been really, really busy these last few months. A couple weeks ago, we had a fantastic pancake breakfast, free to all, come enjoy. And we had, I'd say, well over 250 people, lots of pancakes and sausage, and just socializing and watering the camp. What we've been doing as a group is we did grants, our fall grants, which were just given to the teachers, it was a total amount of $4,120. We ran a gamut, bucket seats for the kindergarten area for them, so they can sit in their corner and do things, a yoga cart, or use for all the ready, some mindfulness and things like that, with breaks. Hamlets for students who are the student photographers in class, so that they can go and sit and borrow a Monadette camera, which I'm sure Monadette are very thankful now that they don't have to worry about this, and they take pictures of what they use in all school meetings. The portraiters just enjoy the comical puppets that just came, and by a flame that's coming, and they will talk, you, Mr. reporting, around, that there is a lot of interest in the flame group, they're a singing group, and it's a group comprised of people with some varied disabilities. And last year was standing remotely, everybody stood up and danced, which is what everyone's looking forward to Friday. Additionally, this person's seat here, we just did the raffle baskets, which are in full swing, so everyone's parents are being begged for more money for more tickets, because these baskets are gorgeous, and they have many great items for education, for games, all kinds of things, Star Wars, you name it, and so it's a nice fundraiser for we can put money back in for all the enrichment that we're trying to give back to the school and to the children. One really exciting thing that's not made, and I'm excited about, the author of The Finest Hours, which is coming out as a Disney movie, he's having to do enrichment with the third, fourth, and fifth graders, Michael Gaius, and so he will be working with them. So, that's always exciting, he will come and see, and then do a workshop with them. So, that's going to be really fun. Additionally, we always have a grant that we do for a former Pine Hill student who is a senior, and that is what we're gearing up for now. So, we will start taking the essays where we give that money, so it'll be nice to see what they say, because they always reflect on their time at Pine Hill, whatever it comes from the past, so we're excited for that. So, we continue to try to give back to the schools and enrich the students' lives, and to make it so that the teachers have some resources that perhaps they would like to have, and we can make things a little bit better at the school. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, the CSA, for all that you do. It's a really wonderful addition to the school, we're really fortunate. Okay, next thing on the agenda is community comments, and I have a few things to say before the community comments start. And I want to just first share a little bit of an email that I sent back to some of the parent organizers of one of the grades. And it started by saying, "Thank you very much for reaching out to the members of the school committee to give us a heads up about the email you sent out and the additional emails we are now receiving. I would also like to thank you for being involved, parents, and for voicing your opinion in a thoughtful and productive way. I was just telling someone the other night, I've been so impressed by and grateful for the respectful manner in which the parents have been participating in the process. So, thank you. Public participation is an important part of town government, and at least from my perspective, is the best way to ensure the actions of committees, like the school committee, accurately reflect the desires of our residents." I'd like to clarify a couple of things, though. First of all, the Sherburne School Committee will not be voting on the FY17 budget at tonight's meeting, that never was in the plans. Just want to make sure that people aren't expecting that today. The vote's currently scheduled to take place at the meeting on March 8th. Today's meeting will include further discussion of key budget issues, and the parents can choose to speak during this public session, or you can sit and listen. Additionally, you will, I'm hoping that some of you will choose to stay and listen to our further budget conversation even after the public session is closed. Second point is that Sherburne Advisory Committee sets the budget guidance number for the school district, I'll explain that a little bit more, a little bit, and that the Sherburne Advisory presents their budget for Pine Hill, which may or may not be the same budget voted on by the school committee, at town meeting on April 26th. That's an important date that you'll hear me mention over and over again tonight. I think it might be really, a little bit, I think it'd be helpful for parents to understand a little bit about the budget process, you can understand a little more maybe about what role you can take in it as well. Like I mentioned, the guidance number that we are given, as the budget number we should strive to reach, is given to the school committee and to the superintendent by the Sherburne Advisory Committee. While advisories creating their guidance number, the school administration is creating an operating budget for the school. If this operating budget meets advisory's number, the process is easy. However, if the school's operating budget comes in over the guidance number, the school committee has two choices: to make cuts to the budget in order to meet advisory's guidance number, or to come in over advisory's guidance. If the operating budget comes in over guidance, and advisory doesn't accept this higher budget number, the only way the budget number suggested by the school committee can become the official FY17 number is if it is voted on and wins at the town meeting, which once again is on April 26th. That means that all interested citizens need to keep abreast of what's happening with the budget. If you want to vote on a different budget than the one presented by advisory, you need to be at town meeting with the majority of the voters supporting the increased spending. And just a little, but this year, we're fortunate in that we can increase the budget a little bit without reaching the 2.5 threshold, so we wouldn't need an override. Doesn't mean that it's necessarily the right answer, I'm just saying that that's, that's an option, whereas some years, it's not an option to increase at all without then going for an override. So, just quickly, key dates, and I will ask just that these are put on the CSA website, maybe Angie, you could help with that. Next, the budget vote is on March 8th, that's the school committee meeting. Townwide budget meeting is on Saturday, March 12th, and it begins at 8:45. And the town meeting is Tuesday, April 26th, with the continuance on to April 28th if It's important to note that while we can choose to spend more than the guidance number, the money is not endless. Choices will need to be made, some school-specific, but some town-wide. For instance, at town meeting, do you want to vote for a new fire truck or two new teachers? Or it could be an extra policeman or an extra teacher. Those are just examples, I'm not saying there's actually things we're voting on this year, just to give the idea that it's about choices, that the town does have a finite amount of money available to it, and we have to choose how we want to spend it. And what the decision comes down to what you believe and what choices you want to make. As for tonight's meeting, when I open up the floor for public comments, I'd really like to let everyone who wants to speak have a chance to speak. So, toward that end, I'll ask that you try to make your comments brief, and to have them, please try to move the discussion forward by adding new information. And then, once the public comments section of the meeting has been concluded, the conversation will return to the school committee, and unsolicited comments from the committee will no longer be permitted. However, there may be opportunity to ask for clarification, if there's something that we're talking about that you don't understand what the process is, or have a question, but you need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. This is the standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. We invite everyone to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but I also understand that many of you aren't able to do so. We appreciate that you've taken the time to participate in this most important process. So...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
No. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, what happens if you go to town meeting in terms of the budget process? If you go to town meeting with a budget that's $200,000 over and it doesn't pass? That's, that's an important part of the process, so what happens then?
I believe that it just goes with the advisories, what advisory is just is there, guiding budget?
One clarification from, I'm George Monroe, chairman of the advisory. We, our guidance is not necessarily our final recommendation, I just want to make that clear, that we have not, we vote on March 12th at our budget public hearing as to what we want to recommend to the school budget. We're going to take, the Sherburne School Committee is going to present to us what they recommend for a budget, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to stick with our original guidance, but we may, you know, we have that option to, to change things around. And as Ann said, it's very important, we're looking at a townwide budget which includes our portion of the regional school committee budget, the Sherburne School Committee budget, the police department, every, every budget within town from Sherburne budget.
Wait, so, so you was going back to that, I believe that it goes back to the advisory, if it doesn't pass by a majority plus one?
But that means, sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry, I... But that means if it doesn't pass, you go back to, if it doesn't pass?
The question advisories.
But then, that means cuts. So, the critical thing is how those cuts make...
I think what will be voted out of town meeting, advisories, or no, the budget presented by Sherburne School, and we, all advisory's role is to say whether we recommend that budget, from what I understand. And then, if we don't recommend your budget, we would present our alternative budget. And that would be accepted if they vote down your budget, so yes, that's...
Right, so if there's a discrepancy between what we want to spend and what you guys want us to spend, let's say it's $100,000, then $100,000 has to be cut from somewhere?
Yes.
That's, that's important?
Yeah. So, that there's reserve funds that we will potentially look at to utilize as a safe , safe harbor on forward as well, so it just kind of depends on when we look at all of this. And not, not...
Also, you know, as far as the procedure, usually the advisory committee gets to make the first motion, so you would, you know, give your number, and then, the way it works sometimes is if people didn't like that motion, they could teach your motion, then give an alternative motion, or sometimes they can give an amendment, there can be sometimes two or three amendments. So, if your amendment was $100, and the other person said, "I want it to be 150 and 200", and some people says 75, usually when the voting comes, is you start with the highest number first. You vote with the higher one, if that loses, you can vote on the next one, and the next one, usually that's the way it works.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Well, I remember from annual meetings in years past, that there's the book that comes out that has the, the table of budgets, so to speak, for each of the, the town...
Everybody else got one of those.
Right, and, and it has all the line expenditures for every department in the town. That is, I guess, advisories' numbers that are in that?
No, no, those are the budget numbers that are presented to us, and we, that we then vote to whether to accept those budgets, or if we say, "No, we don't accept the budget that they presented to us", we would then present, as on our dissenting opinion, this is what we present as the recommended budget.
So, we might have a split? Yeah, so, can I just, I don't want to get too bogged down into these details, that's for us to work out, not necessarily for everyone here to have to worry about specifically. I think the key that everyone can see is that it's a complicated process, and that's why it's important to know what's going on when we vote our budget, when then advisory does their voting, the Saturday, March 12th, date of the townwide budget meeting, and then, school committee. So, even if you can't attend, it's important to follow what's going on and ask and find out. I would love to open the floor up for comments.
Do we need a timer?
Mr. Garland, would you please be our timer? He'll time for three minutes, so you'll hear a sound, so that he's not the bad guy, it's the clock that's the bad guy, okay? It's not great. So, yes?
Hi, most of you know me, my name's Marlene Custodio, I'm a second grade teacher. While at Pine Hill, I taught both steps and I'm third grade. And I teach kids all day long, but parents have to wear what I'm going to say, so this is not the way I teach. But, grade two is a pivotal time in student learning. The strategies and skills taught to students in K1 are being applied across curriculum in grade two. Our expectations are higher and the demands are higher. Students in grade two grow from dependent children to independent learners. As many parents have mentioned, and now from a teacher's perspective, students will benefit at smaller class sizes because students receive increased individual attention. There's better differentiated instruction using IEPs, 504, behavioral plans, and ELLs. Also, smaller class size at the lower grades will also decrease the number of those IEPs and 504s. There's better socialization with fewer disruptions due to social conflicts and behaviors. And there is more time for feedback between teacher and student. And better academic results in the lower grades benefit in the long term with better scores in the upper grades. I began my career at Pine Hill 10 years ago with 19 students, and in recent years, I've had 22 to 23 students. I've had new students join my classroom as early as September, and in January, and as late as May 1st. Each time a new student arrives, time is needed for that child to adjust. Teacher interaction with the new student during this adjustment period is very important, especially if they are BLL or IEPs or part of the student's plan. With each new student comes additional furniture in an already crowded classroom. I've spent weeks rearranging my furniture so that we can move easily around the room. And now, I have a tile pool aquarium as part of our curriculum, and rearrangement of furniture becomes wonderful. As I prepare to discuss the benefits of smaller class size tonight, I realize there's one topic I did not mention, it's students' safety. I'm concerned with the responsibilities of classroom teacher during a fire emergency. How long is it going to take me, or any classroom teacher, to move 24 to 25 young students around the furniture and out the door versus perhaps only 19 children and five or six less desks and chairs? What happens in a lockdown when there isn't enough space in that classroom to hide and protect 25 or 24 children in the corner of the room? What happens when I have to sweep the hall and additional students or adults have to join in on our lockdown? And during these emergencies, the classroom teacher now becomes the parent, the protector, and the guardian. Large class sizes equals crowded physical space, whether it's furniture or bodies. As a teacher, I'd love to have smaller class size. The benefits of smaller class size has been proven through many studies. But after thinking about this, smaller class size is about the safety of our students, which is equal or slightly higher priority to the academic benefits. Though Sherburne is nationally recognized as an excellent public school system, families are moving to Sherburne because of this rating. I strongly urge the committee to consider the benefits of a smaller class size for the safety and well-being of all of our students.
Yes.
Hi, it's funny, my name's Paula Johnson, I'm a parent of a fifth grader and a second grader. It's funny, I'm sitting next to Marlene, because my son was in her class in the second grade, three years ago, at a time when the population exploded, and we came to the school committee, and so they went to vote at town hall, they got a fourth teacher for their grade. At that point, there were three sections, and there were 23 kids in each section. Now, there are four sections in the fifth grade, 18 or 19 kids in each section. That class, the start of kindergarten, has grown from 71 kids to about 74, I think, right now. It's astronomical kind of growth. And my second grader is experiencing the same thing now. She started out with 17 kids in three classrooms, and now there are 23 kids in each of her classes. Kids are getting lost, they're getting lost in the shuffle, the quality of education has gone down, and I think we all think about, it's not just the second grade, rising third graders, rising fourth graders, rising fifth graders, it's all of them, it's all three classes that are facing this, and I think we can't like call for one class or another, we have to look at all of those kids and say, "They all deserve more than what we're able to give them with 23 kids and a completely maxed-out teacher in each room." It's not fair, it's not Sherburne, it's not why people move here, and eventually, it's going to trickle down, and it's going to trickle down to their property values and people wanting to move into this town. They move here for the schools, they move here for the excellent teachers that we have, teachers who have given the gift of small classes so that they can create a wonderful learning environment. We have to keep doing that, for all the kids. My son is so lucky to get a fourth section, I cannot tell you the difference that it has made for all those kids. I just want all the kids, rising third, rising fourth, rising fifth, to see that. It's not fair if we don't do something about it now, it's really not. Barbara's doing as much as she can, the teachers are, we have to do something, we have to make choices, and I think this is the most important choice to make. I'm not a public speaker, so...
Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, my name's Zachary Spillman, I live on Curb Street, I've got two kids in Pine Hill. I was here last month, and I did stay for the whole meeting. It was, it was very interesting, but I have to tell you, at the beginning, you talked about priorities and trade-offs, and as I stayed through the meeting, I was actually disturbed, I was really disturbed, that the meeting ended without the committee identifying the priorities for the trade-offs. See, I think, and I think it's something that a lot of people in this room agree with, that the priority for Pine Hill has to be individualized classroom instruction, and that means smaller classes. When we have 24 or 25 kids, it's just too many. I think the priority has to be classes below 20 children per section. And when it comes to trade-offs, I think that this committee has to identify the things that are in the budget that we are willing to cut in order to meet that priority, because it's there, whether it's administration, whether it's something else outside of the classroom, it has to be found and identified, and then considered against those priorities. So, tonight, I'd like to ask you to do three things. First, state as a goal that no section at Pine Hill should be 20 students or larger. Second, state as a goal that you will identify, you will propose a budget that is fiscally responsible but meets that size priority. And third, don't keep putting this off, because as we get closer to that town meeting deadline, the anxiety, not just of the parents, but of the town, is going to increase. We are waiting for some leadership from this committee to say that this is not going to be a problem, we have to take to the floor of town meeting in April. And so, I'd like you to do that tonight, and I'm going to stay until the end to see if you do.
Yes.
My name is Merrick Atkins, and I am a parent of a fifth grader, which I have this button. And Paula, I just want to add, the reason that we came together as a group of parents that have these buttons on is because we were here last month, and what we heard was that time for the kindergarten through second graders, third graders, fourth graders, but those fifth graders, they don't need it. They need to be ready to go to middle school. And I gotta tell you, our current fourth graders, next year, 25 kids in class, oh, so not good. The benefits of class size that, I have tons and tons of documents, I emailed you, tons and tons of documents, there are documents that say that maybe we shouldn't do that. Those haven't been tested and are about looking at cost. It's about how can we, if we cut a teacher here, cut a teacher there, will it really benefit? And we haven't tried that, and no studies have been done in a community that likes Sherburne, and all these parents are here because we don't believe it should be done in a community like Sherburne. Our kids really benefit from the individual instruction, from our outstanding teachers, from our creative administrative areas, and those kids feed into a regional school system that is outstanding, and that's why I moved here, and that's why we all moved here. Absolutely agree with the comments about, about telling us what you're going to cut, because we all have budgets in our own lives, and we all make choices in our own lives about what we're going to spend, and so we absolutely understand that the money is not endless. But we all are here because we believe, wholeheartedly, for me, it's based on evidence, I'm an educator, I teach medical students, I run an education research program for medical education, and I believe in all this research, and I believe in the difference that I will make for our kids, and ultimately, our community, and for our regional school system, so that they remain a family. If we send our kids unprepared to middle school, and actually, the middle school classes aren't that big, they suffer. They suffer in middle school, because the teachers don't, they can't show them if they have them four minutes once a day. In our elementary school, I do include, they help our kids figure out what it is they need to do to be successful, to win, and individuals, to work with others, it's so important in this world, in life. So, I fully support all grades, I'm here with a fifth grade button on, because I feel like it's really important that we continue it through the entire elementary, and I'm unhappy with the guidelines that exist that say that there should be a difference between the lower grades and the upper grades, and the other thing that I'd like to add to your very well-voiced three things is, look at that policy, it's time, it hasn't been revised in a while, look at that and see if that's based on the evidence. If that is based on the evidence, then okay, but if it's not based on the evidence, which you don't think it is, then I think that this group should, should look at that and make a decision on that moving forward, so that we're prioritizing the things as we believe should be.
Wow.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm Merrick Atkins.
Merrick. Thank you. Just to let you know that looking at policy is definitely on our docket for me, so, yes.
My name's Chris Damar, I have a rising fifth grader, I have a rising third grader who's currently in the Custodio's class, and he will be my third kid coming through Pine Hill, so I had experience with all of our kids in different sized classes and two different things. I was shocked beyond belief to see the sizes that are proposed for classes next year if there aren't additional teachers. Let's not kid ourselves, we're not talking about a one-year exception when a cohort of kids will have to deal with 23, or 24, or 25 kids in a class. We're talking about a fundamental change to how Pine Hill views its classrooms and the size and nature of the teaching that it provides. Your projections are that enrollment is only going to increase, which means this is not a problem that's going to go away this year if you don't ask for the teachers you need, it's a problem that's only going to be exacerbated. And then, reassessing class size, it's okay this year for the third grade, or fourth grade, and the fifth grade classrooms to be 25 kids each, then next year, we will be sitting here listening to a discussion about whether it's okay for those class sizes to be 26, 27, and 28. And that is so far off of 17 and 18, that there is, I challenge all of you, and I'm very sincere, and, and very sincere about this, where are the studies that say there is no difference in learning between a class size of 26 and a class size of 18? They don't exist. If you find a firm investigation, I see literature saying, "You know, we've assessed these class size reduction studies, and 10 years out, you know, the standardized minimal decency state standard tests show small statistical differences." Well, my view, the measure of success of Pine Hill School is not, and whether we can move the needle on having 97% of our kids meet MCAT minimum, or 98% of our kids meeting class minimum. What Pine Hill gives, and why everyone moves to Sherburne, is because Pine Hill gives so much more than that. We are not trying to struggle to reach minimum MCAT standards for our students. We are trying to take them and show them there is nothing they can't achieve, and whatever they want to do, we can help them get there. That time is Custodio and his hodge, while the other teachers that are here today teach here. And we need to keep that promise for our children and our town, for today and for the next generation that is coming. This is one of the most fundamental things we can do, this is what Sherburne is, we are our educational system. We are not a giant metropolitan area with a huge commercial district by choice. And I want to have a prayer to be, thank you.
My name is David Williams, I live on Fawn Road. I don't know if this is true, but I might be the longest Pine Hill parent in the room, I'm year 15. And, and so, I wanted to reflect on a couple of things that I think are important. First of all, my fourth is going to be a fifth grader next year, so I'm coming to the end of my Pine Hill career, which, I might do a little jiggly. My husband actually swore me to never come to another school community, I haven't been until I'm 15 years, this is my second. I'm recording why I stopped coming, but I'm going to imply I came tonight, which is to speak on TV House. So, I'd like to... I live on Fawn Road. I don't know if this is true, but I might be the longest Pine Hill parent in the room. I'm year 15. And so I wanted to reflect on a couple of things that I think are important. First of all, my fourth is going to be a fifth grader next year. So, I'm coming to the end of my Pine Hill career, which I might do a little jingling. My husband actually swore me to never come to another school community. I haven't been till 15 years this year. This is my second. I'm recording why I stopped coming, but I'm going to imply I came tonight, which is to speak on your behalf. So, I'd like to speak on behalf of a fourth grader who has had a great Pine Hill experience. But, like all the parents here, I totally agree with the literature that if you read, it seems pretty compelling that small class size is very important. I will tell you how it gone through the transition now, three times, and the fourth time coming. Pine Hill to middle school is a big jump. And I had two kids that benefited from the rotational program that they used to do in fifth grade at Pine Hill, that really did an awesome job of preparing them to get to the middle school. And I really wish we'd bring that back. That would require more teachers, I know as well. But I think the individualized attention is what really does set us apart as a tech home. And that's my second point. So, I'd like to advocate for my own child and all the other rising fifth graders in the room, and the importance of them being in small classrooms. But I'd also like to speak as a citizen of Sherburne, and as a girl that grew up in Sherburne, and having backed to town and having a lot of my own personal wealth invested in Sherburne. And I'd like to say for us regular old residents, because I'm assumed to be a non-Pine Hill parent, the value of the town is very much in our school. And for Sherburne, it's great to be part of the regional school, it's great to be part of Mindy Man, it's great to be part of all these other things. But why the school system is truly ours, why people move to this town, is Pine Hill. It's really all we have. The library's going to get renovated, that's going to be awesome. I mean, I go back a while, so I remember the old fire station. People don't move to town because the fire station's pretty. They don't move because it's a nice cute twopostion. I'm sure everybody here can. They don't move here because of our great town services overall. They did a great job on the road. I'm, you know, I'm big fans of all the town services. They move here because of Pine Hill. And I would like to someday, after my grandchildren bought their own houses in Sherburne, because I'm now one of three siblings, I have four, three siblings of my own, and three of us now live in Sherburne. We all moved to Sherburne, a mile from our mom, not because she's a great cook, but because we wanted to raise our kids here because the school system's awesome. So, as a resident of Sherburne, soon to be an ex-Pine Hill parent, I would urge the committee to think about, not just this group, but as everybody here has voiced, the fact that class size is one of the inherent goodness of Pine Hill. And I don't think, I mean, in all the meetings, all the discussions I've ever had with parents, I don't think anybody would have expected we'd be contemplating class sizes in '25. If it 10 years ago, you would have been on board. My daughter was in the 2007, so, I mean, we'd never have been considered in that year. That's a long way to come as a group.
Well, I love the passion that's in this room. I love where it's coming from. When I hear everybody speaking, part of what everybody is saying is what I am feeling. I came a minute late to this meeting because I didn't know where the town hall was. I've been in town here for a few weeks. I am one of the reasons. I have a second grader and a third grader. And I came from Medfield, not very far. So, Medfield's a great town. I love the town, I love the city, I love the people of Medfield. My wife and I had a conversation, we have a second grader and a third grader that just started school a few weeks ago here at Pine Hill. The only reason that we came to Sherburne was because of Pine Hill. The only reason. We had a discussion about going to private school, which private school we're going to go to, we investigated. I'm paying multiples more in taxes than I was in Medfield. I mean, multiples more. The logic, the logic was quite simple. This was, instead of paying a tuition to a school, a private school system elsewhere, let's pay the taxes and be a part of this community and come to this fantastic school. You know, I've been dedicated, I've dedicated my life to education. I've been in school a long time. I've got a postdoctoral master's degree. I am completely in favor of education for what this school stands for. I assure you, if you take the education part out of this, I assure you that the property values here, we talked about choices earlier, and we have to choose a fire engine or education, all of which are important and they are tough choices. That said, I am certain that the property values will drop as soon as, there's plenty of studies that show the class size makes a difference. We don't need studies, it's common sense. As soon as scores start dropping, which they eventually would likely do, people like me will not move here to prop up the property values, because I'm not the only one. As soon as the property values drop, now we're going to have stronger discussions about what else do we need to give up, not just what do we have. This is a no-brainer to me. I love seeing the passion, but this is an easy choice that really shouldn't be done in some way. Thank you, and.
What was your name?
Christopher Bisotto.
Welcome to town, and thank you for coming. I'm very impressed.
I know.
Can you spell that last name?
Mason Boyd, I, S.S.A., Mason David, A.
Yes? My name is Meg Hei, and I live on Mill Street. And I wasn't going to talk tonight, but I just have a question, I guess, for this goal committee, because from my understanding, it seems like next year there really will be four grades that will have very large class sizes. So, there are four grades that each need to have one section added, and it just, and I'll have kids next year in three out of those four grades, and it just breaks my heart to think of some kids benefiting from smaller class sizes and some kids really having a year that is not as great. And I'm just, I want to ask, what is, you know, what are the chances, or what can we do to make sure that each grade, each class that needs a new section added, which is probably four, what can we do to make that happen? Or how likely is that to happen? It just, yeah, breaks my heart to feel like we're choosing some kids over others. They all deserve to have smaller classes and better education. Thank you.
I can just tell you that the first round budget that came out included two extra teachers, so that would be three grades with four sections. And the revisions that are coming through that we'll discuss later tonight still include those two extra teachers, so three sections of four, three classes of four sections. And so that, to be honest, that we haven't, as a committee, proposed to take them out. So that, and we will discuss some of the cuts, some of the other cuts that we're making. But I feel like that, I, there's a little bit of a disconnect, and I feel like sometimes some people are thinking that we're proposing not having any sections, that that's going from the school committee. No, 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 I'm not saying you, just saying in general. And that has not actually been on this table, yeah, that hasn't been on the table so far this budget season from us. So, and I.
Good follow-up.
Sure, yeah.
So, I, again, I'm five, so, because of where my kids are, but I also think that class ratio is just really important for the whole school. And I do believe, as others have said, that's why I told me people I'm moving to town, because of how we're Pine Hill it. But I also have incoming kindergarten, and I know kindergarten lost an aide in the classroom last year, so there's now three kindergarten sections with two aides. And what I've heard is that incoming kindergarten class will be close to 20, which is a lot higher than it's been in past years. But I also think between now and September, when school starts, there could be more kindergartens moving in. I think a lot of people do move in for kindergarten. And I just wanted to know if that's going to be addressed at all as well.
So, I can explain that, so I think, sort of did Vicki mention, I think Vicki mentioned earlier, that we can only budget what we, what we know and we anticipate, but they, advisory suggesting having a bit of an emergency fund?
Potentially.
Potentially. So that if our prediction is that there would be, say, 19 per class, and all of a sudden there's a huge influx, there is, will be some money that would be, not just for Pine Hill, but for anything happening in the town, huge snowfall, you know, but that that's something that we could tap into. But that's not necessarily something we would budget.
Right.
Because we don't know.
Yes.
So, it's hard. And that's one thing that's hard, there's some grades that we do know that there are certain numbers. Kindergarten's hard because that's still very up in the air. But I appreciate, I appreciate that you wanted to know about that and that someone asked about kindergarten, because generally it's an underrepresented group.
Senator, have you seen the way you're twelve foot and three? Just a quick question. Is there physically space in the buildings to add a couple of different classrooms?
We've had, yes, we've had many more sections than we do now, so.
Great.
There's space. Have to rejig yourself a bit, because it's now been using, it's been used by other, some of our, like, PT or OT, but there's, there is classroom space, yes. I saw a hand. Yes?
Hi, Melissa Henderson McStravic. I have four children in the Dover Sherburne school system, three of Pine Hill. I'm an active and a vocal member of the community. I hate people who see me before. I volunteer a lot in Pine Hill, in the library, in the kindergarten classrooms. As Meg said, I have firsthand experience of going into classrooms with some other parents here in the kindergarten. The lack of the aide is definitely noticed. This is the first year, this is my fourth child in kindergarten, and it's the first year that there's been no aide, it's definitely noticeable. As Meredith pointed out, there's lots of research about lower class size being helpful. I work in IT research, and I strongly encourage you to engage in primary research. Go into the classrooms, go into Ms. Ryan's library and see what it like to have 25 kids in a class, and see if you can get some individual one-on-one attention. Primary research will show you firsthand that you probably won't be able to make it out of there without an Advil and a, and a long quiet walk. So, I encourage you to actually go and visit the school if you don't see the stress it's causing, the students, the teachers, and the parent volunteers who are going to supplement now. Thanks.
Just quickly, as a former teacher myself, I appreciate what the teachers do in the classroom every day, but I do also know that they are highly trained and high, we're so lucky, we have amazing teachers. So, when I go into Pine Hill, I think, oh my goodness, as a parent, I go and think, oh my goodness, I understand it's hard for the teachers, but I also know that they are, we are so fortunate, we have the best, but they can actually do that without an Advil every day, which is, I think, should I check? Yes? Marla? Some years.
What happened is after school?
It's all right.
Melinda, any else? So, I have all my notes, and a lot of my thunder has been stolen. I think, you know, Meredith spoke to the research. Do I have to? I have to. Which I know we've shared with you today, so most of my notes actually were about the research, and I've heard parents and teachers speak very passionately. So, I think what I was going to, what I will do is maybe sort of piggyback on all of that. So, as I mentioned last meeting, I'm an elementary guidance counselor, I've been doing it for 17 years or so. I have taught class lessons for all of those years, and I've taught class lessons to classrooms of 25 or 26 students. I've taught class lessons to 13, 15. The difference is astronomical. So, you look at things like physical space, when you're teaching your lesson, what is it that I want to do with these kids? I want to differentiate my instruction, I want to make sure that my, I get to my quiet kids first, maybe my kids who have an anxiety disorder that's been diagnosed, maybe, maybe it isn't diagnosed, but I know that my quiet learners need me first, I want to check in, make sure that they get started. I want to get to my bouncy kids, and I want to make sure that they have space, and I want to make sure that they have the tools that they need to deal with their extra energy, their wondrous and spirited extra energy. Those things like bouncy balls, they take up physical space. And where I'm headed with that is, when you're differentiating your instruction, you're setting up centers. So, when we're paying money for professional development, we want our teachers to be able to implement that in a classroom. So, we don't want our classrooms to look like this, like little sardines stuffed, you know, like little sausages. We want movement in the classrooms. Teaching in 2016 is so much more dynamic than it used to be. So, we need the physical space. We need to have that fluidity in our teaching. And that takes advantage, again, of the tax dollars that we put into our professional development, allows our teachers to be the exponentially wonderful teachers that they are and get to those kids. So, I guess the other thing I want to highlight too is, is how different our learners are today, and how much more we know about our learners. So, we want to take advantage of that information. If we're just going to stuff them into classrooms and have them sitting at desks, we're not taking advantage of all that extra information that we have now that we didn't have 10, 15, 20 years ago. So, we can go ahead and make sure that we tailor and individualize instruction to our kids, and you can't do that when the numbers are 25, there's just too many kids. The other thing I want to add too is that in Sudbury, I'm part of the Alice Committee. So, when you spoke about the safety plan, instructing those kids in real emergencies, how do you function and how do you get them, you know, out of the room, and what do you do, and all those protocols, you were absolutely 100% right. That is super important, and I'm so glad that you brought that up, because that was not on my mind at all, and it is something that we should be thinking about. Statistically, probably we're going to end up with a problem that's going to require some kind of an evacuation, but we still have to be prepared, and it doesn't mean that we say, well, it probably won't happen, so we're just not going to be ready for it. So, you do have to be ready to move those kids out of the building within minutes, so that was an important point. I don't know, do you have any questions?
I forgot to need the button on.
Oh, wow. Yes?
I'm Jenny Chain, I'm 24, Roswell Hill, just moved here last August. So, first of all, I want to say I'm so impressed with all the parents here in Sherburne, they're so awesome, and very impressed with the Pine Hill School. So, I'm a little afraid to speak up, I do want to address some of the issues, I'm thinking as kind of realistic issues that you may be facing, so I just want to have a conversation and maybe bring this up. Of course, I'm advocating for smaller classes, and that's the reason we moved to Sherburne as well. I think there's no doubt about the research supporting smaller class sizes. I grew up with 60 kids in my class, so I kind of don't understand that, but I totally get it. Just a joke. So, I think what I noticed is Sherburne, like, we're moving to houses where people are retiring. So, I don't necessarily see a lot of new buildings in Sherburne. So, I think tax-wise, I don't necessarily think you have a lot of influx of additional revenues, while there are a lot of families with many kids moving in, I think that's creating the problems we currently are facing and in the future. So, I think, understanding that with the budget, and I agree totally with what everyone is saying, that our priority is smaller class sizes, but facing this reality, is there a compromise that we can come up with? And I talked with a friend who is on the board of a school, so she kind of suggests something called a soft slip. I don't know if anyone heard of this idea. So, basically, for your core curriculum, that the kids really need extra attention for English, math, science, that you create the additional classroom, where some other classes may be, not that there's, you know, I don't want to downplay music, PE, or other courses, maybe not the core curriculum, that they can still have a little bit higher ratio so that, as a compromise, I think that costs less money for our town to hire a new teacher. But, of course, first priority, less than 20 is ideal, but I'm just saying, if we're faced with some kids may suffer for the higher, for the less desired ratio, maybe we can come up with some compromise, but still very good decisions for our children.
I realize that there will be more opportunity for you to speak at future school committee meetings if you want, and also, please note that all of our emails are online, and if you'd ever like to ask questions individually, it doesn't have to be the mass email, it just feels like, I have just a question or a thought, please feel free to contact us in between meetings. We're happy to answer when we can, or what we can. So, yes?
No, I know, I just stand up again if it's something new, right? You don't get to complain in the course, right? No, it is new. No, it is new. I was just going through my pile of papers and I would be entirely remiss if I did not share with the committee. So this is a set of signatures from just about every fourth grade parent, a current fourth grader that I submit that just sort of supports and asks for those additional teachers. Hold on a second. Where's, there's a small group of us are submitting that on behalf of the current fourth grade kids to advocate, of course, for the additional teacher for the fifth grade.
Thank you for that. Could I ask who you're submitting it to? Who you're sending that?
I guess two of us.
Could I encourage you to also send it to Mrs. Corral? And also to the head of the Board of Slick?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Because as I was saying, this is really, it's, it's a bigger issue than just what's here. So that would be great to keep them in the loop too so that they know what's going on. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes.
Hi, I'm Ethan Shannon. I live on Sterling Road. I attended the last meeting about a month ago and I just wanted to have a question once and clarification. I thought of the last meeting you spoke about when you submit your budget, you ask for, let's say, an increase in two teachers and, but you don't clarify what grade those go to? Is that true? And if not, who decides that?
Would you like me to answer the question?
Did you get the hint?
First, I have a question. How many recognized his voice from the last few days?
Yes.
So sorry about that.
Thank you.
Typically, the distribution of classroom teachers is a building-based decision. So we entrust that the principal working with her staff, looking at the numbers, monitoring enrollments as, and registrations as we roll through the spring, would make those decisions. Right now, technically, the way that the two teachers that have been included in our proposed budget, we're calling them flowing teachers right now, although I know Barbara has a very good idea of, of if the numbers stay on track, where they would go. But one of the issues that we have is that clearly enrollment is increasing. Nine years ago, enrollment was at 470 students and the low point was two years ago, or three years ago, 368 students. But enrollment is going back up and what's interesting about those numbers is that at this time last year, the budget was built, was built on the premise that there would be 365 students in our school this year. In fact, we enrolled 380, 379 on October 1st. That enrollment has grown and our projections for next year are 397. So, so in effect, you know, we'd be, we're projected to grow by 32 students over what we were planning for last year. And the real important piece to understand is that seven, eight, nine years ago, the difference between the exiting fifth grade class, for example, in 2009, 10, there were 92 fifth graders and we're projecting the following year to have 57 kindergarteners. So that's a, that's a big jo, that's a big difference and that's where you see those, that decline in enrollment. I will tell you that the, the fifth grade class this year is at 71 and right now we're projecting 65 kindergarten students. So that gap has narrowed tremendously. And, and the fact is that home sales have gone up the last two years. So we're definitely seeing a trend back up, at least in my opinion. So, so the, the long answer to that question is, right now, I, I can tell you that I think Barbara, based on our numbers that we're projecting, has a good idea where those two additional teachers would go, third grade and fourth grade. But again, our plan is to really monitor very, very closely what our, what are, what those numbers are suggesting and how registrations go.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So in the budget that was proposed, fifth grade, fifth grade would, next year, the upcoming fifth graders would have four teachers and then third and fourth would also have four teachers. But that's all.
I think it's important that people do not, we will have three grades, right now the way that it's working, we'll have three grades with four sections. What you said is what we're, what the current thought is, but if 20, you know, if 20 kids came into second grade, we've got to just sort of figure out, there's going to be a little bit of flex.
And that's why I asked my first question about where that's decided. And just, I just wanted to have an understanding of what the thought was now. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Michelle Druce. I'm from 58 Old Orchard Road. I think the other thing that I would propose, and the reason that this is so important for parents, is that Mr. McCullough just said that we're going to have potentially 65 kindergartners. If you look at the numbers across all of the grades, that would suggest the possibility of even needing three additional sections, not the two that were asked for, to actually maintain a class size more in the 20 range. So there's a group of parents here that is very concerned that as this enrollment continues to grow, there's yet another family moving into Sherburne starting on the 22nd that has an incoming second grader and an incoming fourth grader, both of which are kind of, you know, in that mix, that there's going to be a hot debate about where these teachers go because the way the budget was submitted, in my personal opinion, it looks like, based on the projections, one class could be underserved relative to the numbers that we've all been talking about. And so that's a real concern for the parents there.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Delaney. I have a three-year growth. I just have a question, I think it's more for the advisory committee. I'm wondering how those projections are being determined, you know, the enrollment projections, that is. I can just speak anecdotally. I give tours at Pine Hill and I would say on a weekly basis right now, we're getting requests for, to give tours to incoming students and a lot of those families are very, you know, very seriously considering a move to Sherburne. So I'm wondering if there's, if we're talking to realtors and figuring out exactly, so who, who might be?
The administration made a great reference. We based our guidance on three-year averages of budgets. We, we're just dealing with budget numbers. We don't deal with enrollment numbers. It depends on the school committee to recommend to us what, what they're.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it's historically based or if it was more forward-looking to sort of who might be coming here. And many people ask me this question, so I think that would be something that's of interest.
Before I turn over to Mr. McCullough, who has this fancy way of he determining, I think he's got a crystal ball and a crazy, but he figures out the enrollment based on trends and, and historic. But just really quickly, just note that because we were off on our projections, for, is it this year's, this year's budget, that the numbers that advisory was using to build their recommendations off of was built on what we had projected, but we had more students. And so that was part of why it's important for us to continue to work with advisory. And so why this is a work in progress. But let me just let Mr. McCullough answer Elizabeth's question.
So typically in a school district, it's, it's the administration's responsibility for projecting enrollments. This is something I've been doing for many, many years and, and I have a certain model that I use. I do not have a crystal ball, I wish I did. My goal in, in, and looking back over the many years I've done this, I always, my goal is to, I'm happy when October rolls around, when the projected numbers are within plus or minus 3% in any one grade level. Because that typically leaves you, that's typically enough room to, to work with the sections. Now granted, I would tell you that for the last eight years, my experience in doing this has involved a school, has been a school district that had five elementary schools, a total of 110 K of five sections across all five schools. So there's a little more flexibility in those large numbers. So, so this is a new challenge, given that it's a one-school community. But, but the, the projections are individual grade projections, which is different than the way it's been done here in the past. And it's based on what's called the cohort survival methodology. So it's based on a previous three years' average of growth from one grade to the next. And the model takes into consideration the, both the in-migration and out-migration of students in a particular grade level, moving from, for example, first grade to second grade during a period of time that begins October 1st right through September 30th. That's the way the mathematical model works. So one of the, when we show these projections, one of the things to remember, and I know from a intuitive standpoint, it's difficult to get, but for example, the model we're using is projecting that there will be 71 students in third grade next year and we're starting the, we started the second grade with 66. Well, already we're up to, well, as of January 1st, 68 students. So, so intuitively you say, well, there's no way that projection is going to, to, you know, be true. Well, no, on October 1st, of course, but what we don't know, we've seen in migration, we haven't yet seen any out-migration. And typically that happens over the summer. So, so we use a three-year average. I don't survey realtors frankly, but, but I do look at those, those housing, housing sales, sales numbers just to get some context. But the other thing that we, we do as well is we also look at the one-year rate because that gives more of a current trend. And, and we look at what's the three-year rate versus the one-year rate and, and often what that leads to is looking at the enrollments in terms of a range and looking at the high end of the range being that one-year rate because that would, in my experience, especially if a trend is changing, that gives you a heads up, it gives you a preview into what that trend may be. So, you know, that's how the enrollments are projected. Previously, what used to happen is every student that was currently in, in one grade was automatically rolled forward to the next and then there was a calculation school-wide what that in-migration and out-migration number might be without regard to where that in-migration, out-migration would occur. So last year, for example, all of the students in kindergarten through grade four were rolled forward. A kindergarten number was established based on the census information and then there was, there was, I think it was 11 in-migration, out-migration students. But at the time the budget was being developed, there was no sense of where those 11 students would fall. So it makes, it makes the forecasting even that much more difficult.
But I, I'm sorry, but I, I trust as you're making this budget or as you're looking at these numbers, you're getting information from Dr. Brown and as to who's touring and how many people. It does seem to me like a lot of, we've had a lot more tours than we had maybe six or eight months ago or requests. We're getting a lot from right now. Maybe that's the time of year, people are looking towards summer. I don't know. It just, it would be, it seems like illogical.
Yeah, anecdotally, it may be helpful, but again, we'll, we'll have a sense of that again as we grow through the spring and into the early summer. One of the, well, I won't, we can go into that in the budget presentation. I'm not going to bring up another controversial issue.
Please stop. Just really quickly, anecdotally, we've, I found in the past when I was giving tours back in the day, that maybe a third actually end up moving in. So you really have to wait, as soon as the PNS is signed, then Barbara's really good about informing, so we know. So the second, yeah, so we know it's sort of trends that it's, it's busy, but that's, we really wait till the PNS and then, and there's always a lag time too between that. So we have a sense between when they sign and when they move in. So that helps a little bit. Yes.
Hi, I'm Naomi. I just went back to my, I've sat in a lot of town meetings personally and I still get confused with classes with our small town, but, and so I guess my point is, I'm hearing that having a kindergartner who, having a second grader who has the benefit of a kindergarten class that dedicated to me and now having a kindergartner who has roving aid and it's a big difference. But what I'm hearing is due to projections are across the board, there's an increased need for the budget to provide funding for extra teachers. And my question is, I realize that part of what changed this year is there's an increase in what, in students to our town and there's also a change in the funding system across the board for all of our town departments looking at the trend base over the last three years. And obviously the trend base in the last three years is significantly different for the school system. And so I'm wondering the process at this point. What is this group? Obviously, our school board has to work with the budget that they're given. They're doing the best that they can. Our input is valuable. Advisory is working with the numbers. What, is there another group or is there another part of the puzzle that we need to be involved with in order to do here? Is there any way to alter the amount of money, to add money to budget at this stage or before town meeting or do we have to wait another year? What's the process?
Do you want me to answer that? We, one thing that the town, the way we kind of start is you're limited by state regulation a two and a half percent tax increase. So that's the maximum that we can increase our available spending. So one, just one item within that, so we have the whole town, including benefits, which are now increasing at a rate of 13 to 15% a year. So we have to factor in, that's a sunk cost that we have to spend. There's a, so we start by taking out these, these things that we have to spend and then we have these discretionary budgets, is what we call them, the different departments, where we say, okay, the, and what was happening in the past was we had operating budgets from departments that we just rolled budgets forward each year. This year we went to trend budgeting because we were seeing some large turnbacks from departments or money not being spent. So we wanted to take three-year averages of what's actually been spent in each department in town and say, this, this is a more proper budget. And we know the first year's going to be tough with that and things happen like, like this in the school where the trend isn't necessarily going to fit and we're going to take that into consideration. We, we have, we, so that's what we had to do with our public hearing on the 12th. And it really does come down to, what it really involves is the citizens because as Vicki said in our last meeting, to just becoming a school committee meeting is one piece of what we have to do on advisory. We have all the budgets, so we have to consider including the regional school budget, which our piece is even bigger than, I think, the Pine Hill budget. So we have, that, that's, that's another large component to what we have to consider. So staying involved through the whole process and coming to town meeting is as.
In year 26.
It's very important because if you want your voices heard, that's the place, because the town, the citizens are, who actually approves the budgets? It's not advisory, it's not, I mean, we make recommendations to the citizens and we vote on it.
George, are there going to be openings on advisory come May? Do you know?
Yes.
There's, there's like always openings, you have to beg people.
Because you have, yeah, we have, your advisory is three-year terms and you're only two terms.
Two consecutive.
And there's two people that are leaving advisory at the end of their term, at the end of July, at the end of June 30th. So we are looking for two new members for advisory next year. Advisory is an appointed board by the town, by the town moderator.
So not just, but if you raise your hand, there's a good likelihood, so I would just say not, not only going, but getting involved.
Yes.
Because it's really complex and it takes you a while to get up to speed, but they're likely to going to be, there's likely going to be more challenges down the road. So if you're really, if your kids are in kindergarten, I would get involved. How are you?
Not only in advisory, there's a lot of other. Not only in advisory, there's a lot of other areas in town where there's, where there's a lot of openings. So be involved in the whole town. I mean, I know this is what everybody's passionate about, but it's, it's important, that, that it's a piece of the puzzle.
Are we good? All right, well, I, so please, I'm hoping you'll stay, but I just want to say thank you so much again, and I appreciate the passion. Uh, I, you know, as a parent, I totally understand that I get the mama bear in me, too, because, you know, my kid's my, the most important thing. Um, so I really appreciate you taking the time and coming and sharing your thoughts with us. And once again, reiterate, and the, the dates will be posted several places, um, our next meeting's March, our voting meeting's March 8th. We may have another meeting on the 25th, February 25th. We'll let you know if that does happen. Uh, townwide budget meeting, Saturday, March 12th, in the morning, starts at 8:45 in this room.
March 2nd.
March 2nd? Oh, okay.
The Sherburne School Committee does present their budget to advisory on March 2nd, and people are always welcome to come to the advisory.
That's true. And-
Sorry, one more clarification. So they are, so they're coming to you on March 2nd-
Correct.
-to show you their budget, and then you're voting on it March 8th?
Right, because we will have spoken with them, and if they, we can work-
Yeah, and then we're voting on March 12th, on what budget to recommend to the town for town meeting.
Yep, on April 26th.
On April 26th, I'm correct.
Just, I'm sorry, is all of this posted on the website somewhere, where all the states are?
Town's website, the town calendar, yes.
And, and then I'm also, at Gandy's, so that she'll post it on the CSA, and then I'll see if Barbara can perhaps send it out, or, or something. But you should be writing all this down.
Fine, you're just, that's fine.
Just kidding.
One more question.
Yes.
Do, are there public comment periods at all of these meetings? So we can be heard at all of these meetings?
Do you mean all the school committee meetings?
The advisory meeting, you have your- Not necessarily, I mean, at pub, at, at March 12th, there's a public hearing, absolutely. That's our public hearing.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out where it could be, so it's always useful that people are sitting in a room, but for those of us that all have the endless hours to sit in the room, which I know none of us really do. When, not just this, but other situations in town are asking for comments.
And March 12th is when we do really open it up as a public hearing.
Everybody who got it. So the value of going when school committee presents its budget to advisory is really the listening part, as opposed to the, I guess, happy to go and provide physical support, but there's not much else we can do.
We don't open it up for public, they're just presenting a budget to us. We don't even necessarily provide a lot of feedback.
So the place, the place for people to really be is the March 12th and the April 26th?
Right.
Meetings especially.
I have one question. I've gone up to the website, not in the last two weeks, and I've attempted to print down the budget. Is there a good place that we can get a comprehensive budget? The last time I looked, the school committee budget was actually missing from the website. Um, and it's a lot of handwritten notes and other kind of documents that are submitted in.
Our town calendar, of course, is available for a few weeks.
Okay.
But let me check with her, and see if she can have a central loc, she's the one that's been booked to go to a central location, so I'll follow up with her to make sure the school budgets are included in that. I think we were kind of, it was a draft budget, as it was, so let me, let me see.
That would be fast.
I'm going to see her on Wednesday, and we have a meeting tomorrow night, to talk to a bunch of other departments, so probably, so we'll see her tomorrow night, I'll ask her about that, and all the information.
You know, the, the school committee already voted on the proposed budget, haven't you?
No.
Well, now, in your minutes, then, we're in last month's-
Can we vote on, on a, like, a, like, the-
Preliminary.
A preliminary budget, not a, uh, we need to vote-
So the, the minutes reflect that, and these are the minutes from the December 8th meeting.
Right, can I just explain? So we are required to submit a, a first draft budget by December 31st to the town, so we have to vote on a preliminary. So we voted on that as a preliminary high-water mark, we, uh, first round, but there's nothing that's final, or anything about that. Does that make sense?
Generally, it wouldn't go above that, and it al, it always goes down.
It'll go down, right from there, that's generally.
Just so that we all know what's already happened.
We did vote on the, on a high-water mark budget.
It was a vote to approve the proposed FY17 budget that has the two additional teachers, and I'm reading from the minutes here, "with the understanding that reductions will be considered going forward."
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we good? All right, thank you very much, and I'm going to suggest that we go now to the next item, which is the principal's report.
I'm going to be super short and sweet, uh, knowing that we have a big discussion still ahead of us. I wanted to highlight, uh, two key points this, uh, school committee meeting. Uh, the first is, uh, having gone through, uh, just recently issued our mid-year report cards under our new reporting on student progress structure, I wanted to report that I've received only positive feedback from parents and teachers. Uh, both parents and teachers valued holding conferences earlier in the fall, as opposed to the December timeline, uh, and completing written reports at con, at the mid-year mark allowed teachers to have much more observation and analysis of student growth. So, uh, we're, we're very pleased thus far with the rollout of our new reporting on student progress timelines and structure. The second bullet that I reported on, uh, really ties into one of our school improvement goals, uh, with all of the professional development, uh, time that's been allocated for our K-5 teachers to work with literacy coaches, uh, to, uh, improve the standards-based, uh, content that we teach in reading and writing, to better align, uh, expectations for student learning, uh, and coordination K-5, and to make sure that we're assessing, uh, what we think we're assessing, uh, with regard to student learning in more authentic and, and meaningful ways. Uh, the, the teachers have made great, great strides with, with their work. Uh, and at this point, we are finally, uh, ready to start, uh, to draft curriculum that will be publishable by the end of the school year. And I appreciate our school committee's patience. We started this a few years ago, and then I said, wait, hold the presses, we really want to work on growing our collective capacity to teach before we document what it is we think that students should be learning, or, or revisiting, uh, the then-dated curriculum. So I, uh, look forward to sharing in more detail, and I gave you just a salient, uh, overview of, of what the understanding-by-design content will look like within, within the curriculum. So I look forward to reporting on that in more detail.
Right. Thank you. Um, preschool update, so tell us.
So in your packet, you have some information, um, regarding preschool. We actually presented to school committee, um, it was back at least in December, some information about, um, proposing to, um, increase the preschool tuition rates for the upcoming school year. It is something that school committee would need to take a vote on. There's some information in your packet that compares, um, the proposed tuitions to at least three of the pro, area private preschools, as well as three area public preschools, um, to, so that you can see what the proposed tuitions look like in comparison to those different groups. So that's in your packet?
When would we have to vote on this?
Um, we need to take a vote, because, um, we need to invoice parents who have been chosen for the preschool lottery for next school year, so they need to be invoiced, um, for tuition fees for the first half of the year.
But so that needs, because we, they didn't get these, we had to look at these till very recently, because of the snow. Um, so, but a vote is really required today, or could, if we have an initial meeting later this month, could we vote then, so we have a chance to look at the numbers?
That, that's on, that's, but by the end of the month, it's not going to make a lot of difference. I think, unfortunately, we presented this information, um, maybe in November, and it fell off of the radar for the December meeting, to take a vote.
Apologize for that.
No, that's fine. Um, so the information is there for you to look at, I don't know if you have questions. If you haven't had a chance to look them over, then we can answer any questions you may have at the next meeting.
I just have a quick one. So at the morning class numbers that you're giving us are what they currently are, as opposed to what the capacity?
So you, you're talking about the sheet that shows what the class sizes are currently?
Class sizes are currently.
Yes.
So are there, what's the capacity?
It's, so the regulations around capacity are also in this packet, um, I believe it's the second piece of information that you have there. So these are regulations that are set forth, um, for integrated preschools, that talk about the number of, maximum number of students per class, depending on the number of special education students in each of those classes, students with IEPs. The regulations, um, give us guidelines there around class size, um, teacher and number of teaching assistants needed, based on class size.
So the reason I'm asking that, so it looks like it says that if you have more than six or seven students with disabilities, classes will not exceed 15 with one teacher and one aide, um, and you look at the numbers, for instance, the morning classes all seem to be much smaller, as opposed to the morning and afternoon, so has there been a thought about potentially?
So the projection for next year is to definitely increase the morning, um, group class size. I was not able to break it out by day, the way that you're seeing this year's numbers, it's, it is listed down below. There are a couple of parents who have still not indicated which days they prefer. Um, they've signed up for, for example, three days of a week, but have not notified us yet which days. So it's not broken out by day.
Got it.
But we're looking at, right now, 18, and there's a potential for a 19th student we're waiting to hear back from. We have contacted all of the parents on the lottery waiting list for that morning program at this time, and we're waiting to hear back from the last parent. So we're looking at probably nine students in the morning class, and 10 in the afternoon, so a total of 18 to 19 students, um, for next year, as compared to this year's numbers, which are lower.
Lower, okay.
Do you usually have the ability to, to fill the classes with more students? Do you have extra applicants on the waiting list usually?
We, we do typically have a waiting list of parents every year, so, um, depending on how many students are staying with the preschool classes, so we have, we have two classrooms. The morning classroom is the younger students, the full-day classes, students that are older, four and five-year-old students, maybe turning five during the school year. So if students are staying with the preschool for a number of year, another year, excuse me, that might determine how many slots we are going to fill in the classroom. So when students are with us, we, we don't then make them have to apply for lottery again, they are with us. So depending on how many of our students move to kindergarten, that helps us determine how many positions, how many slots are open for the next school year. But we always have a waiting list of parents, and this year, um, for the younger group, the morning-only class, we have, um, contacted every parent on that waiting list at this time, um, and are waiting to hear back from one more.
Thank you. Yeah.
I was just looking at your numbers, I had a, a couple of questions, I just don't know, I spent a very, very long time since I looked at, uh, kindergartens for my kids. The difference between the private, uh, preschools and the public preschools, there seems to be a difference in the, if you look at the range of price, I, just a quick, simple calculation, I just took the average of the, you know, the lowest price on your list and the highest one to that average number, and there's a, you know, a difference in the average price of a private school preschool versus a public school preschool. I'm just wondering, was there any benefits to the private school for those extra amounts of money that, that they're providing?
That would, that'd be, I think that's kind of a hard question to answer, whether there are benefits. Every preschool, private preschool, um, determines their own hours of operation, so the number of hours students are in school each day varies by preschool. When you look at the averages for the public preschool programs, we are right in the mix with those. Part of the reason for that is we are operating our preschool classrooms, so that we can provide service to students with, with special needs in those classes. And so we want as many, um, tuition-paying students as we can in that classroom, to make that a really true integrated experience for our students. So we do try to, to have some advantages to coming to the public preschool program over private, um, which is, when you look at the averages from the area public preschools, um, you'll notice that all of them tend to be a little bit, um, lower in tuition costs.
All right, so if we have questions, it'd be okay if we email you, so next.
Can I ask a question? Um, I just, we had talked about this last time, about the two pre-K classrooms, and only having eight or nine students, when the guidelines clearly said that you can have up to 20 per class. Why are we having two classrooms? If that's, I, I don't understand the recommendation of two classrooms, why there's-
So it's, it's, right now, we're, we're discussing that, but when you look at the guidelines, uh, if, if you have one class where you can put up to 20 students, no more than five on an IEP, right now, we're projecting four students. So if, if we, if we have a couple of students who need those services, then, then that's a problem.
Could we take more tuition-paying students up? I mean, it seems like you're not-
And that's what we're doing. Going through the list of people on the waiting list to fill the classes.
Good question, yeah, it makes sense. Okay. All right, thank you, Terry. Uh, so, Mr. Baumhauer, we're supposed to have the monthly financial report, but Mr. Baumhauer have had to run home for a, a family health emergency, so he's not able to be here. Would you like to?
Um, the, the memo you received, uh, again, this is the monthly financial report regarding appropriations through January 31st, so we're, uh, seven months into the fiscal year. As you know, we, we break this report out into salaries and, and expenditures. Mr. Baumhauer has provided a, uh, a document that speaks to a, a number of the variances. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
One, one of the questions that I have, and I, I have a little bit of a, not being an accountant, when I, when I look at all these numbers, I'm not sure at the end of the day, sorry, the end of the school year, where do we stand?
Mm-hmm.
Are, are we positive, negative, and by, you know, what about?
So we're positive, I, I can certainly report we're, we're positive. Uh, we would expect to have a positive variance at the end of the year. Exactly how much, uh, I can't tell you today, but we are looking at that. We're, we're going through a process now of trying to project where we may be, uh, and, uh, I think that's important, as we move forward over the course of the next few weeks to finalize our budget. We, we do want to have a sense of, of where we're going. But if you look at the salary line, so the total salary lines right now is almost $82,000 positive variance. What you should look at, though, is, uh, right now, we assume that we'll, uh, we'll spend the substitute money, although my sense is, we probably won't spend all of that. We assume that we'll be spending the professional development money, um, and also the custodial services, uh, there's just a couple hundred dollars left there, but that's, that's basically overtime. And we assume that we'll, we'll spend those three lines. The other lines have been set, the, the funds have been encumbered, and barring some unforetold emergency, uh, so we would expect that there would be a positive variance there, uh, the 81, and minus those remaining, the remaining balances in those three lines. In the expenditures, uh, that's a little more, uh, difficult to, to project, but, uh, right now, there's a $219,000 positive variance in all of our different expense lines, uh, but, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at those, and, uh, I'm expecting that the vast majority of, of those funds will be spent between now and June 31st. But again, we are working on, uh, trying to come up with a, a draft projection of what, what, uh, the budget may look like at the end of the year. We'll be sharing that as we get more information.
Is, is there any way?
Go ahead.
Is there any way to see, just to, I, I think I asked this before, to get this straight. Things that are encumbered, even that shows a positive, uh, balance, are, are things that we are contractually obligated to pay, that we know. So we know, for instance, teacher, the classroom teacher number, that we know that we're going to get that back, right? But utilities, for instance, it's a big number, but there's no particular contract there, so that's, we don't know about that. So the custodial services, so we have that in both, that's, just out of curiosity, what, what is that, if it's not salaries, that it's 100,000, on the, on the bottom section under expenditures? Not detailed, just, just-
So which number, though, the custodial- So, which number, though, the custodial services function code is thirty-two-two-eight-five?
Right, yes. So, I'm just saying, what are the custodial services under expenditures compared to the custodial services under salaries?
Custodial services under salaries are the actual salaries for our custodians. It would include overtime that we budgeted.
But, the expenditures is, that seems like a large number compared to salaries. Is that just other contracted custodial services?
Sure. It's supplies and materials, it's maintenance contracts for the various operating systems. You know, it reflects those kind of expenditures for both the facility itself and the grounds.
So, would that be like the testing for the water every month that we have, and then the elevator charges we get every month, they see coming through on the bills?
There are six budget line items that correlate to that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, let's move to the FY seventeen capital budget proposed changes. Mr. Valdif.
I'll hand this over to Mr. Hess, who will very ably be able to walk you through this, but this, I believe the intention for tonight's agenda item is to vote a final capital dollar amount to pass forward. Is that right, Mr. Hess?
Right. Originally, we had around three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars. That included the construction of the windows. And we already had some engineering money for the windows, but the more we studied it, there were two different ways to go, to have half-windows in the cafeteria and then glass going up, and then whether to have triple-glazed or double-glazed, and we had two different engineering companies. So, the way it was working out is that by the time that we got the engineering studies back, and by the time we would be able to then have an official person, architect, do the building specs, which is required for a project of this size, and then put it out to bid, and then have the windows built, and then have the contractor try to do it, we would not be able to squeeze it in this summer. And so, because of that, we wanted to reduce it and put it in next year, because even though we wouldn't be borrowing the money until we actually bought them or started to build the windows, is that it still goes against the town's capital ability to borrow, okay? Now, this has been authorized by the town to borrow this money, so we didn't want to put that on there until it was more likely to be used into a closer time level. So, basically, what we need today is a motion to approve the capital request at eighty-two thousand dollars. So, moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to just point out that, so it's a reduction in what we're asking of twenty-fifty, twenty-sixty thousand dollars, and that...
Right, and we would plan to do that, so put it on next year, then.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, okay. Thank you, and thank you to the capital budget committee. Now, the operating budget. You're on.
Thank you, Ann. In your package, you receive some information regarding a list of proposed adjustments to the first-pass budget that was presented back in December. But, before I, and what I'd like to do is just highlight each item and give a quick rationale as to why the administration is proposing these adjustments. But, first, I'd like to just make an attempt to quickly put into context what these numbers all mean. So, the budget that was, that was, the preliminary budget that was approved by the school committee back in December resulted in a budget that was three-point-one percent higher than last year, the current year's operating budget, for a dollar amount of two-hundred-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. So, that's where the budget stands now. That budget was put together by the administrative staff and Barbara and her staff, and I'd like to describe this budget as what we believe was a fair representation based on the numbers of students that we anticipate coming into the school next year, couple of continuing initiatives, for example, moving the FLESS program into grade three, and a budget that we believe fairly represents what the educational program at Pine Hill will look like next year. The advisory, Sherman Advisory Committee's budget guidance called for an FY seventeen budget that represented a minus-two-point-three-five percent decrease from the current year's operating budget, or a decrease of a hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. So, right now, there is a gap that exists between the proposed budget and advisory's guidance of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars. I've said this before, that, and I'll say it again, we continue to scrub our proposed budget very carefully. We continue to go through it using the lens that we've been asked to by advisory to look at, trend budgeting, which is not necessarily a bad thing. And we have come up with a list of proposed adjustments that closes that gap, but at the same time, I believe, does not impact to any large degree the core services or the ability to meet the educational program that the proposed budget originally envisioned. And going through this process, we've made a concerted effort, quite frankly, to look at those items that are not necessarily related to people. I happen to believe that the people who make up our budgets are the most important asset that we have, and are able to provide our students with the most effective resources that we can, we can offer. So, what we've done in our proposal, and I'll go through this quickly, but we're proposing to reduce the budget by about sixty-four-hundred dollars, and we can, and we're doing that by moving a portion of the cost of our assistance to our federal IDA grant. After going through that, we have about sixty-five-hundred dollars of flexibility where we can, we can move that cost to our federal grant.
Is that a one-time, a one-time thing, or...
No, this assumes that the IDA grant will be funded for FY seventeen at the same level. It's funded in FY sixteen, so that's about seventy-three thousand dollars. And I would anticipate that that's the minimum amount will be funded, because our enrollment is increasing. I would expect we'd see a minimal, at least a minimal increase in that. So, I would, I would expect that future federal grants, special ed grants will, would fund, would fund those dollars. We didn't, the next, the next proposed adjustment, and just for those of you who are listening, there's a list here of, I got to add them up, about seventeen or eighteen, and they're not huge amounts, so, but it gets us to a decent number. We are proposing to adjust what we're budgeting for, anticipating budgeting for salary for the two new teachers that we're proposing. We had them, we had them budgeted at the Masters fifteen step five rate. We did an analysis, we went back the last three years and looked at all of our new professional staff hires at Pine Hill, and where we, where we actually hired them at. And by doing that analysis, we just averaged out the last three years hiring, that salary, and it came out to a Masters fifteen step four. So, we can realize the savings of about fifty-two-hundred dollars. So, we're making that proposed adjustment. We're proposing to eliminate the proposed zero-point-six FTE, Special Education Administrative Assistance position. That's a position that would have provided three days of support directly to Ms. Green in her role as the K-12 director. We've talked, we talked about that a lot, and we're looking at some other ways that won't impact the budget that we may be able to provide the support that Terry, Terry needs. And by going down this route, though, I would, I would suggest to you that we'll do everything in our power over the next year to come up with some other creative solutions, but this kind of a proposal may be back on the table again a year from now. But, we're going to make an effort to see if we can find some different ways to provide that support. We are proposing to reduce the longevity budget by five thousand dollars, and that's because we've been able to make a change in the teacher's contract language related to when that, that early retirement payment to retired teachers is made, so that's easy.
How much was in the budget to begin with?
One placeholder, one five-thousand-dollar placeholder.
So, we'd already reduced that from previous years, because at some point, we had three, five?
Required to have...
It was five?
Right. So, remember, this is new language that went into effect with the most recent collective bargaining agreement, and the first budget cycle that you would have talked about this was last year. And the language in the contract was, was not the most clear language in terms of, you know, whether you were required to budget it or not. Anyway, the change in the language that you saw at the last joint meeting takes care of that.
Takes the rest of it.
So, that allows us, going forward, to budget for known retirements as opposed to, you know...
Right, that makes sense.
Seeing which way the wind blows and just plugging a number in there.
Can I stop you for a quick second? If people are interested in looking, you can actually look at this, it's online, if people have that, doversherpa.org. It's the right-hand side. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. The next one is to reduce the school committee contracted services line by thirty-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Again, we went back in and we looked at the historical spending trend in that line, and so we believe that that is something that we can live with. That line, although I do want to point out that currently, that line is being, is overspent for this year, so it may, it may feel that that doesn't make sense, but that line is overspent because of the superintendent search consultant's fee that was distributed across all three school committees. You won't have that fee next year. We're proposing to, and then we're getting into some supply and materials lines. This is something that, that we certainly have talked with Barbara about, and, again, these are all based on historical spending. So, looking at the trend budgeting concept, and believing that by making these cuts, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll still be able to provide what we need to provide in those lines. So, very small, ninety-two dollars in the superintendent postage line. I have to tell you, when you get your next revision, we're going to change that. The, it's budgeting a hundred dollars, that would leave eight dollars in the line. I can't remember why we're leaving eight dollars in the line, but we don't need to have superintendent expenses for superintendent postage at the elementary level. So, so we're adding additional eight dollars there. Again, there's another superintendent line for supplies. We're reducing that by five hundred dollars, again, based on past spending, and superintendent travel by eight hundred dollars. I think that leaves two hundred dollars in that line, that's based on historical spending. And then superintendent equipment, two thousand dollars, we're cutting from that line. It leaves a nominal amount in case there's something needed at the central office. And remember, what happens with those lines is that those are coshered lines, so that if there's supplies and materials and equipment that's needed in the central office, that gets, the charge gets dispersed across all three school committee budgets. But, again, based on historical spending, we can cut that two thousand. The technology software line, we are proposing to cut by a thousand dollars, principal postage by five hundred, principal office supplies by three-hundred-and-thirty, again, all based on past spending, music contract, contractual services by fifteen hundred, in-state travel for special education by four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, art supplies, two thousand dollars, music supplies by twelve hundred, and P E supplies by a thousand. Now, those were, those were all in the proposed budget increased by more than that amount, so this, that still leaves in each of those three supply lines a substantial increase in those lines. So, so, again, we believe that we can, that that's responsible to do that. Five hundred dollars in computer contracted services, two hundred dollars in classroom computer software, again, based on previous spending, psychologist contracted, contracted services, four thousand dollars, that hasn't, we haven't spent money out of that line in the last two years. The regular ed transportation, so this is an interesting proposal, it's thirty-five-hundred dollars, but the context is, we do have fixed costs for regular ed transportation because we have a three-year contract with them, so we know exactly how much we're going to spend. The thirty-five-hundred dollars, though, represents a portion, a piece of the contract that is a fuel surcharge language, so that if it's in the contract and we budget in case fuel costs go up much more than we expected, we have that money, and the, the transportation company has the right to charge us for that. But, the opposite occurs as well. So, if fuel costs drop, then we'll actually receive credit for the, for the fact that the cost of fuel has gone down. So, we feel very comfortable that, that we can reduce that line by that amount. We're proposing to reduce the utilities electric line by eight thousand dollars, again, next, based on historical spending, and that's certainly the way we're trending, back to one of the questions, well, it wasn't a specific question, Greg, you had, but back to the way it's trending this year as well, after seven months. And then the last two items, we're proposing to reduce the budget, the proposed budget by forty-eight thousand dollars in the special education out-of-district tuition line, that's because we budgeted, one of the potential placements we budgeted no longer needs to be budgeted, that's been resolved. And then the last proposal, this may be, this may be one where the advisory committee has some conversation about, but we're proposing an additional reduction of almost thirty-five-thousand dollars, thirty-four-seven-seven-nine, and we would achieve that by, by increasing or utilizing the circuit breaker at fifty percent to offset the budget, as opposed to forty percent. And was that worksheet in your packet, where we, we provided a worksheet where we broke out what the expected FY seventeen circuit breaker reimbursement is?
Did you do that, or you did that for chikering, I think, maybe?
Yeah, no, we'll, yeah, we'll, I'll get that to you so you have it for the next meeting, but it, it shows, it shows the different levels of reimbursement, what the amount would be, based on what FY sixteen's expenditures are, and those expenditures are, we're in, we're in real good shape in terms of identifying what we believe those expenditures will be for the end of the year, and what will qualify in regards to FY seventeen reimbursement. So, we have a worksheet that shows what the forty percent level is, the sixty percent level, and the seventy-three percent level, and the state has reimbursed all districts at seventy-three percent the last three or four years, anyway. So, we have high confidence that we'll, certainly in FY sixteen, we'll, we expect receiving seventy-three percent reimbursement of our eligible costs. of our eligible costs last year, and I expect that we'll see that next year as well.
One question on that. One, I guess my question on that is since we've historically received 73%, why wouldn't we budget at 70% or something close to that? If we're doing trend budgeting, it makes more sense to budget this higher than the final money in the budget.
Wasn't it advisory that wanted us to do it?
At 40?
At 40.
Well, because it's the year that, because there was one year, because what, four years ago?
Right.
That's what they really reimbursed at, 43?
Right. Yeah, we had some move-ins sometimes that catch us and...
Yeah, I just did base up.
So I'm happy to look that. You know, I come from a district where we offset the special education tuition budget by the full anticipated, we use 70% every year, and that's what we did.
Yeah, that's where we've had the circles as well.
That's exactly right.
So I think, personally, I think it makes more sense to budget it up to 70% since historically, the last three years, we've got. What would that bring that number up to, I mean?
Well, the total would be, if 10% is 34,000, then that would be, that would be another 70,000.
As long as...
George, that's a teacher!
But, as long as life deserves it, if we need it. That can only, that's, that circuit breaker money only offsets out-of-district spending, though. It doesn't offset general ed spending. So if you're already, if that number's already dropping, which it has been, it goes back to the town's free cash, but it doesn't necessarily change the in-district aspect of the budget.
No, it doesn't change the in-district aspect, but the budget that we proposed and that number of $200,000 above current year spending and $354 above Sherburne Advisory's guidance is based on the all-in, in-district plus the special education budget. So that difference, right now, we're projecting $139,112 at 40%. The worksheet has an adjustment, it's a little low, it's about 135. The 70% is 237,802. So this is about a $100,000 difference. Going to 50% allows us to make that adjustment. It's almost $35,000. So that gives you a sense of what those numbers are.
One of the concerns I have when you talk about a lot of families moving into town and populations going up is special ed cost, because it's uncontrollable. That's, I misspoke. It's not uncontrollable, it's hard to predict, and it's unknowable in terms of what you're going to get. So we had always talked about, or we bounced around the idea of having a fund out there to provide for some of those emergencies, which could easily swamp, I mean, if you could have 30 kids coming in, you just, you don't know, but it could easily swamp, you know, a $200,000 buffer fund. So it makes sense to me to do, to budget circuit breaker based on a good expectation, but if you have bad experience at state level, then we're going to get knocked down again. So if you had that and you had move-ins, it would be, it would be a lot of pressure.
One thing on that, we are potentially proposing a warrant article to establish a fund for, specifically for circuit breaker. So then, if that situation, we have a reserve fund for them.
So by budgeting?
We'd budget at the 70%, and we would have a special fund for...
So by, we also budget net instead of gross, right? We budget net at a discount, which I've never been able to figure out, but it makes sense to have that, I mean, if you, to have that. If you budget at the full amount, then you don't have the cushion, right? I mean...
You don't have it, but you have, if you have that reserve fund, that's your, that's...
The reserve fund would come out somebody else... That's a separate, that's a general budget line.
Down, down, you know, come to us and say, our circuit breaker was only reimbursed at 50% this year, we need to tap into the special fund that we need to...
Because it was in the free cash, too. So it's, the pool of money's there.
Right, exactly.
So I think that's a great idea. State law allows a municipality to establish a special reserve fund specifically for the purpose of special education. In Winchester, back in four, five years ago, school committee did ask town meeting, they put a warrant article forward. So that fund can only be established with the vote of town meeting, so I'm glad to see you're considering that, and I'm happy to work with you to see if there's anything we can do to help put that on the warrant. The way that we funded it was, we funded it initially with a $200,000 amount that actually came from the operating budget that year, because even though we netted out that full amount of anticipated circuit breaker reimbursement, we happened to have a situation where we had a couple of students who actually moved out of state, who were high tuition, out-of-district tuition students, and so we had a surplus in that line. And so we were able to fund initially that fund by $200,000, and then the next year, we had a similar circumstance, we funded it with another $100,000. What that did in Winchester, prior to that, if we had move-ins or unanticipated costs, what we had to do was, we had to freeze our operating budget, and we had to pay for those costs from the regular ed side of the budget. And so creating that fund, being able to fund it, allowed us, going forward, to knowing we had that reserve, in case we did have unanticipated costs, we could go to town meeting. Now, the issue with that fund is that if it's set up that way, it can only be appropriated by town meeting, it has to be a two-thirds vote. But that worked well. The school committee in Winchester accessed that fund a couple of times, and that just wasn't a problem, and it was always done at the annual meeting, so there's plenty of time left in the school year to be able to appropriate those funds and pay for it without impacting the regular ed budget. And one possibility in funding it this year, instead of funding out of free cash, although maybe, maybe you've already made preliminary calculations on free cash based on an anticipated surplus, but there will be, I think, I think it's going to be on the magnitude of about $200,000 from the circuit breaker reimbursement, because our costs were funded at 40% that will be available, and certainly, you know, those funds might be the source for, for an initial funding of that account.
Rather than having fiscal year 16 rather than rolling it back to free cash.
Yes.
But like you said, just to reiterate, it needs to be voted two-thirds at town meetings, so it needs, it's not just a majority vote to establish a fund like this.
But also, the circuit breaker amount is a one-time, it's one-time, right? So if you say, well, we're going to get $200,000 in circuit breaker, we can add teachers for $200,000. It doesn't work that way, because the teachers go on.
Can I, for a point of clarification, and I apologize if I don't understand, but what I thought I heard, and you guys will tell me why I'm wrong, I'm sure, is that the school budget assumed a 40% state reimbursement for this year for special ed, despite historically typically getting 70%. And now, at the end of the year, we're going to be getting almost $200,000 that was not budgeted, that would otherwise have been available to spend in general ed, and the budget assumptions at the beginning were, no, okay, excellent. So, it's, well, it's $200,000, okay, so what, we spent less on special ed this year, or it was that, what, I don't understand that circuit break, but I just heard that with the 40% assumption, if we change it, it frees up budget that could be spent on other aspects of the school.
That's exactly what we're talking about, though. We budgeted at 70, well, if you, if we budgeted at 70 versus 40, that does free up operating expenses to be used for general ed.
So if that $200,000 had not been assumed to not be there, then it frees up...
You're talking, you're talking about the past.
I'm always talking about the past, so I'm talking to you...
The money, the circuit breaker amount is reserved for, out-of-district, out-of-district only, right? So if we don't spend it, it goes back to the town. It's not our money, it's not schools' money, it goes back to the town, and then advisory make, Georgia's sitting there saying, yeah, it could be used for general ed.
I'm saying, I'm saying, what I'm talking about is fiscal year 17 budget, right? We originally budgeted at 40%. What we're saying, historically, we've been getting 70s. So what I said was, if we budgeted at 70, yes, that frees up some other money within the school budget.
Sure, you could give it back to us.
For fiscal year 17, to get closer to the guidance number.
Right, but it's sort of similar to, we're using less capital, so that leaves money that could, so it's, it's money like any other money, it's not necessarily specific to us, but it can be signed, assigned back to us, if that makes sense.
No, no, it's helpful.
It's very confusing, it's taken me four years, five years to understand circuit breaker.
It's like, it's a question of choices, so we have a choice in some of this because it's regular, it's by the state, so money comes in to...
But this year, you could use it to set up the fund that you were talking about now.
That is what you're saying. The fiscal year 16, if there's truly a $200,000 turnback because there, it didn't use that $200,000, that got reimbursed at 70, it's at 40.
Town could use that $200,000.
We could use that, the town, that town meeting can appropriate that money, or the advisory can recommend that money be appropriated.
Technically, circuit breaker reimbursement funds that come from the state have to be spent on special education expenses. But what that means is that although we have money budgeted in the appropriation for special education, as that money comes in from the state, we pay that first, so that at the end of the year, there are funds left in the operating budget, the appropriation budget. It doesn't matter if, in the appropriation budget, it's assigned to a special ed line that's not part of the state statute. So you can still, the school committee has the ability, you have the authority, to spend that money any way you want. I'm not suggesting that you do that for this year, for this year, but that's, that is, that's the reality, that's how that works.
But it's not for us to put ahead, we can't apply that to next year, and we can't apply it retroactively to this year, it's something to be spent.
So what I envisioned was the following. So we, this FY16 budget, the special education costs, were based on the town receiving, using 40% of the circuit breaker reimbursement to offset our special education costs for this year, which means that 30% of that reimbursement, or 33%, which, I'm just using this as an example, because we haven't done the figures yet, but about $200,000, that could be the remaining 73% of circuit breaker reimbursement, could be about $200,000. Maybe it's less, let's say it's $100,000, just so we don't get people's hopes up. But what would happen is, that money comes in, it's put into a circuit breaker account that the school department controls, and so as a...
That fund would be controlled, I think, by advisory now.
No, I'm talking about the circuit breaker money.
Oh, the circuit breaker fund, about the circuit breaker special...
No, the special reserve, that's right. But the circuit breaker money that annually comes in is put into a separate fund, it's controlled by the school committee, and what happens is, you have to spend that money in the year you receive it, or as you spend it, whatever balance remains in that fund can be carried over to the next year. And that balance can be carried forward for one year, but has to be spent. That's the regulation, that's what it says. What has happened here in Sherburne, and it happens in Dover, in Dover, in their budget, they pay, they budget 100% of the cost, and they rely on that 73% circuit breaker reimbursement that will go back to the town. But the way it goes back to the town is, we pay, we pay all of the special education costs from the circuit breaker monies first, and that goes down to zero. That means there's a balance left in the appropriations budget, that's the budget we're discussing now, and as a positive variance in the budget, that has in the past been sent down, back to the town. Any unspent money in the school department's appropriation budget, well, you all know this, that's left at the end of the year, is required to go back to the town's general fund. So what would happen under the scenario we talked about earlier, was that that difference between the 40% and the 73% for this year, whatever that money might be, would end up being in the operating budget. And town meeting couldn't, in fact, under that proposed warrant article, create a reserve fund and fund it with X amount of money by transferring X amount of money from the FY16 school budget into that reserve fund.
So can I just quickly ask, let me just quickly, so, but didn't Dover then, this year, haven't they experienced a couple of expensive special ed move-ins? Because they budget at 100%, they have to scramble to find the money because the town was expecting the full turnback, and now they're not?
Absolutely, which is, which is, which is why, if in fact, there was going to be a movement to net out the special education costs in the operating budget to the full 70, 73%, I would only suggest doing that if in fact, there was a fund, a reserve fund that was available for the school committee to ask town meeting to appropriate against, if we had a similar situation. That has, what that has done for Sherburne in the last number of years, it's been a longstanding, well, I don't know how long a practice it's been, I can't speak to that, but in a year when expenses were higher than anticipated, you had that additional circuit breaker monies that you could use. So it was kind of a built-in reserve fund.
Right, except for the year when it went down to 40%, which is why we've all panicked. One of the reasons why.
I'd like to speak on the second item on there, the classroom teacher salary. This would be the starting salary for the two new positions we're talking about, and this talks about reducing it from, you know, budgeting for step five to step four, and I don't mind it being in the budget that way, as long as there's some flexibility. But the thing is, at advisory meeting, I heard one member suggest that we hire much lower on the scale to save some money, and I have some thoughts on that, and I'd like to share them with you. And I'd like to say that our students have excellent educational outcomes. As we try to look for reasons, we see a modest physical facility, we see a modest but growing use of technology for both students and staff, we see a modest but supportive amount of educational materials. There are two main reasons that Sherburne kids are successful. The first main reason for our success is the pool of educated and supportive parents who send us kids who enter our school with tremendous educational and social skills. They hit the ground running and are ready to learn. The second main reason for our success is our staff. We have attracted and retained highly skilled teachers. When hiring teachers, it is important that we hire the most qualified person available with the widest range of certifications. Trying to hire a teacher with less than five years' experience without a master's degree is not always an advantage. Sometimes you can find a person just out of school, perhaps they taught in our own system or someone we know, who is very dynamic and natural in the classroom, but most new teachers learn things the first few years to allow them to be even more effective in subsequent years. If we hire teachers right out of school, then we are providing their learning curve, and they will spend the first five years struggling to get their master's degree while also struggling to learn a new profession, and we, the system, will be paying for a great deal of that master's degree. We also have just three years to determine if a teacher should get professional status. Some decisions can be obvious in just one year, but sometimes with new teachers, learning more about the profession each year while working at night to get a master's degree, the long-term skill set development can be more in doubt. We want excellent, not good. When a teacher comes to us with five years' experience and a master's, by the end of three years or less, we can better determine if that teacher will meet the long-term needs of our students. When we advertise, many certified teachers will apply, but just being certified does not mean they are interchangeable parts in anyone will do. When hiring an MBA for a key position, you want the best possible fit, not an interchangeable part that will work for less money. The teachers for your kids are the CEOs for their classrooms, and you want to have the best one possible. So I just want to note, the administration to know that I give support for them to try to hire the best possible. to hire the best possible person within the working of the budget and not just try to save money when you hire.
But you're talking about hiring, Matt. You were saying, teaching and getting your masters, they're talking about hiring somebody with a master's plus fifteen, right?
Right. But the suggestion that I heard at advisory was that, you know, we hire someone at bachelor's one or two and, and save some money. And it would. And sometimes that works out fine. Sometimes you get someone who's off and running and, and you couldn't get anyone better. I mean, but I think that most of the time, there's a lot of learning that goes on those first five to seven years that a person teaches. And sometimes we can reap the benefits of that.
Just because you're hiring at step four doesn't mean that person isn't step four, right? I mean, we, you, you could hire somebody depending on where I'm, our matrix is, where they're coming from. You know, if they were, if they came from the Cape and they were making forty-two, you wouldn't hire them at fifty-nine just because that's where they are on the matrix, right? You can plug them...
The superintendent has ability to, to do things. No, excuse me, when they're hired, once they're hired, Frank, they're on step...
After the meeting, let me know what those things are.
Well, can we clarify, is it true that we can hire at, we can negotiate whatever, where they, wherever they want to come on?
I, I would have to go back and check the contract language. Typically, placement on the salary schedule, there's language regarding that in a collective bargaining agreement, certainly everywhere I've been, there is specific language relative to that. So I want to go back and, and check that. But typically, if someone has been teaching for five years and has a master's degree, typically they're given credit for their five years of experience and placed on the schedule according to their degree status with those steps. That's, that's very standard practice. In terms of, of, you know, whether we budget a master's fifteen, step four, or five, or whatever, it's really a placeholder number. My practice has always been that our goal in going through the hiring process is we hire the person that's the best match for that position. And, you know, there may be, every year, different professional staff positions require people with different needs, you know, and that changes from year to year. So it's really a placeholder. Typically, what will happen is next year at Sherborne, there will most likely, it's highly likely that there'll be, there'll be more vacancies or professional staff vacancies. There may not be classrooms, but other professional staff vacancies beyond just two new classroom teachers. And so what we do, because it's responsible, we, we monitor the budget, but, you know, if Barbara was in her team, we're interviewing candidates, and Barbara came and said, we have this great candidate, we can't lose them, and they're going to come in at, you know, master's thirty, step seven, we have a conversation about that and, you know, we figure out a way to, to bring them on board. And, you know, maybe she has a candidate for another position that is exactly what we need but comes in a little less. So, so our goal is to hire the person that's the best match for our kids and our staff and our school. And, you know, it, it, over the long run, you know, through the course of a year, that my experience has been that, that salary differential over the hiring usually just evens out.
We are reputed for hiring very well, I might add.
I have, I've got a number of questions, but I want to go back to the, to the circuit breaker. If I could just give you an example and tell me if, if this is right or wrong. If you had an out-of-district placement and that was, cost a hundred thousand, then we have to provide up to the, we have to pay for up to the circuit breaker amount, which, around it to forty, roughly three times the state average, right? So that's over forty, but we'll call it forty. How many?
Four times.
Four times. So how much is that now? That's...
It's forty-two thousand eight forty, I think, this year.
All right. So I'm going to round it down to forty. That leaves sixty thousand left. And we're saying that the state reimburses historically roughly seventy percent of that sixty thousand. So seventy percent of that sixty thousand is forty-two thousand. So the state pays forty-two and we pay the balance, right? So if, if you pay the circuit breaker amount first, how would you ever have anything left over? You know, because you've got, you've got to pay a hundred thousand and you're paying the forty-two that the state gives, gives back and you've got another fifty-eight to pay, how would you ever have anything left over?
Let me, let me just see if I can just spell that out. So next year's proposed budget calls for, we have budgeted in tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. When you add them up, that's what's in the budget. Our projection, based on FY sixteen eligible cost, because circuit breaker lags a year behind, so our reimbursement for next year will be based on FY sixteen expenditures. So we're estimating the total eligible reimbursement amount is three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars.
Okay.
So that three, that, at seventy-three percent, that's two-hundred-and-forty-seven-nine-nine-three. So that's what we'll expect to receive from the state. If we, if we're projecting, if we assume we'll get seventy-three percent reimbursement. So as the seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollar, as those bills come in, we'll pay the first two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars of those bills from the state circuit breaker money. We'll pay the remainder from the budget, lying, lying on the budget, and that will leave a balance of two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars in that line item at the end of the year.
Paying from the circuit breaker money that's given from the year before.
So we've got a budget of seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars.
That's the total out-of-district expense.
So, so, no, I'm sorry. So seven-forty-three is net the forty percent. So, so right now with the, when we take away the forty-eight-thousand-dollar tuition, that brings our tuition budget to eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars. We budgeted seven-hundred-and-forty-three. So again, you do the math. The two-hundred-and-forty-seven that comes in, we pay the first eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand to the eight, to the, to the, to that two-hundred-and-forty-seven bucket. And, you know, you, so you take eight-thirty-four minus two-forty-seven, I don't know, five, five-ninety-something, we've budgeted seven-forty-three. So we'll have a balance based on that of about a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars at the end of the year. I've been doing this for eighteen years and it's worked every year, so. Well, not for eighteen years because circuit breaker didn't come into existence until two thousand and three.
Can I ask, before you move on though, can I sort of see what people in the committee feel about then increasing from forty percent to fifty percent or if that's a number that...
Can I ask another question that would affect that?
Yes.
As, as our experience is going to get more and more positive over time, right? Because we've got, the, the out-of-district numbers are predominantly in the high school. So the high school, all the out-of-district is in our, is in our budget. Pine Hill out-of-district as well as the region out-of-district. So, so the larger numbers are at the high school and those numbers are going to decline over time, right? Because, well, that's the experience and as they age out, it, it looks that way, right? My point is...
Take this as, as static numbers, yes, but there's no way to predict.
My point is we've had, we've had a lot of positive experience, positive financial experience in out-of-district, very large numbers. And as those kids age out, this, this positive experience is going to potentially bottom and go the other way. So budgeting at a higher level makes sense, but, but once those numbers get really low and they start going back up, it could be a different, it could be more shocking to the budget.
Okay, so one-year lag period. So you have time to plan for that? So if you have a year where you, you have, you know, an unusual or atypical expenditure pattern, you know, if you have a reserve fund, great, that's how you handle it.
That's the biggest key.
Right. But, but you do, you do get to plan for that the next year because, because A, the next year, the reimbursement amount will be larger. You know, say you have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar expense you didn't, you didn't, hadn't planned on in FY sixteen, that expense becomes eligible for reimbursement in FY seventeen. So again, you, you have a year where you can, you have to, you have to do some juggling perhaps that current year, but you can then plan for it in the following year.
Do you mean for it in the opposite though, almost in that if we're not sending very many, our OOD budget's very low, we're...
Right. And then you have, then you have move-ins as that number begins to climb again, which it most likely would, then you'd be sort of a year behind.
A year lag.
Right, it would be a year lag, but the opposite way. As opposed to having more, we have less for that.
Less. Well, that's my point, is you've, you've got less...
So that's the concern.
But, but again, that can happen in a year. You could be spending a million dollars this year and have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar expense. Your expense next year is going to be in the budget, one-point-three million. So even if you get it down to a hundred thousand, I, I mean, I may be wrong, but I think that it, it, I, I don't see, I don't see that it has a negative impact rolling out when you're looking and building a budget and, and looking at budget to budget going forward. I think it's, it's just a different ratio.
Don't we also have a capacity other than this reserve fund capacity? Is there a capacity to be able to handle some of the things that used to be sent out of district to handle them in district because of the, the types of special ed people that we've hired and the, and the offerings that we've been providing over the last several years that we haven't in the past?
Pine Hill does a fabulous job of, of working with all of the students in district, but that, it, it doesn't preclude a scenario where we would have a student that we were not able to serve in district, but certainly we've done a fabulous job at Pine Hill of hiring really good staff who are, are working with students that come through the door every day.
And there are scenarios where developmentally, inclusion models work more effectively at the elementary level and not as effectively at the secondary level for, you know, as, as peers. So, so, you know, many, in Dover, Sherborne, certainly many of our out-of-district placements aren't, they're not necessarily children that are placed out of district at the elementary level and then stay on. There's, there's many out-of-district referrals that come as, as kids are at the region as well.
But it was brought up that a lot of our move-ins happen to be in the elementary schools so that it gives time before they get to a secondary school in that situation and those plans can be made in, you know, very far in advance if the majority of the move-ins have, for the most part, you know, none of this is set in stone, but for the most part, if they're moving in at the elementary school levels, you know, they'll be, they could be larger percentages only staying in school as opposed to being sent out of district.
And we start our transition conversations with children that have more complex needs. Intentionally, we start those transition conversations before budget season, if you will, so that we, we try to be as gratuitous as possible.
So, and perhaps based on the, the conversation up to this point around circuit breaker, we'd be happy to put together a couple of scenarios for you that, that may illustrate this a little more clearly? If that would be helpful and have that for the next meeting?
I think that would be helpful. And I think it'd also be helpful to us to know if you're going to definitely move forward with the plan or, or not, because I think that would impact...
We don't have it on our agenda for tomorrow night, but I would put it on our agenda for hour twenty-four. We have, we have a meeting, we're meeting with the regional school that night and we can talk about this before, and so then you have that knowledge before you're...
We leave it on the twenty-fifth. That would be great.
And I'll, and I'll be in touch with you, Bill, about the language and that kind of thing of how to, how to set up something like this.
Great. Yeah. So I appreciate that. I feel like that's...
We do have a placeholder on the docket for the one and a quarter for this specific thing already this year, so we'd like to include it. I think, I mean, I can't speak for the whole nine of our committee, but...
Right. We just wanted to be good to hear with an eye, with an eye, thank. But I, and I appreciate that. I think that, I was talking with Barbara earlier today and she was saying that sometimes we get, it's hard to look at new things, look at things in new ways. For us, it's a new way to look at it. Bill points out it's not really, but for us it is. So I appreciate that.
Right. No, no, I think that's a good point.
Okay. Yes.
So on, on the budget, I have two questions. One, we're forecasting our aggregate enrollment to go to three-ninety-seven, which is a huge jump from last year. So two things. One, does the revenues look, does the revenue, does the entire budget look at also what's coming from the, from the state in terms of regular ed reimbursement? I think that's called the cherry sheet. And to account for that three-ninety-seven number, is that already included in there? That would be one. And the second question that I have is if we're looking at the three-ninety-seven number, could we consider looking at a budget that we have back in the time when we had somewhere in the neighborhood of three-hundred-and-ninety-six, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven students as opposed to the current budget that advisory is suggesting at the minus two-point-three-five percent or whatever the person...
So that because, because our staff is almost entirely the same as it was back in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve when it was three-ninety-six, everyone's moved further right and down the, the matrix. So just staffing costs, I think alone, would preclude that from being directly relevant? Right.
Awesome. My understanding of the cherry sheet for reimbursement, so if a million dollars is the budget and the state gives a hundred thousand, goes directly to the town and the town appropriates a million dollars for us. So that doesn't go to the school committee, from my understanding, it might for the region, okay? But not for the town.
So chapter seventy, which is the education aid that comes from the state, does go to the town. And typically, in a community like Sherborne, where school spending is well above, well above minimum local contribution, that, that chapter seventy money is just factored in as part of the town's general revenue. And so the, the, so typically that, you know, that doesn't have an impact, wouldn't have an impact on our budget. There, there, under the governor's proposed budget, there's a slight increase in chapter seventy, and that's, that's related to the foundation enrollment, which is based on this year, October one's enrollment. So the chapter seventy aid also lags a year. Correct.
Just going back to Frank's point really quickly, I think part of what he was saying though is if we look at when we had three-hundred-and-ninety-six students in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, there were twenty-two sections were proposed, just...
That doesn't mean it was the right number though.
Right. That's true. I'm just saying historically.
But we're looking at twenty-one right now and we could probably use twenty-two and that seems to be the right number for us now. And that was also the right number, or the number that we had back when we had three-hundred-and-ninety-six. So I'm just saying that, you know, and our budget was higher then and we've, our budget has come down every year since then. And now our enrollment is going back up and it's back up at a level that's at that point. So I guess that's, that's an argument that I have for that advisory number and looking at what that advisory number, that we should try to hit as a goal, should be evaluating as well.
I don't disagree necessarily, but if you look back in time, you could, you could make, a lot of people can make the argument that you should have had fewer sections at one point in time. So just looking back at history to see what we had is not necessarily...
No, but, but looking at what we, what we need now versus, with the numbers that we have and what the three-ninety-six was before is they're pretty similar, you know? And so, and, and a budget that we have for twenty-two sections should be more of a goal than having a smaller number than the three-seventy-nine goal is for right now. That's my point.
I get it. And, and I would say that the classroom teacher component of the budget is about twenty-eight percent so that, you know, there's, that's a classroom's...
It's like eighty percent.
No, no, no. That's all salaries. The classroom teacher salary... The classroom teacher salaries are about 28%. So it's not that we don't have, you look, if you divide, I mean, when I'm looking at classroom teacher salary, the line item, and you could argue, but the point is that it's, you've got tons of salaries there, and all the salaries together are 80%. But the classroom teacher salaries are less than half of the budget, just the classroom teacher salaries. So that, so that going up by two or three is not all that huge. It's the whole sort of ball of wax, all the resources. I mean, we spend, general ed, we spend, if we spend 14, 5, or whatever the number is, out of the general ed budget per child, that's a pretty good bit. It's not like we don't have the resources, it's how they're allocated. So if you just look at adding classroom teachers, I would say you have to look at the other components of the budget. I've got a few more budget questions, if...
Sure.
So what's confusing for me is we have to, we pass the FY16 budget before we know what we're going to spend in FY15, right? So, and then we're talking about the '17 budget before we know what we're going to spend in FY16, and we talked about encumbrances and knowing what you're going to need and what you're not going to need, and sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. So I've got some questions about the encumbrances and how, and the budget with regard to the salaries for the additional teachers. The number we have for salaries and increase is 176, 596. And this is, you can just look at round numbers. So that says the increase for the two additional classroom teachers and FLESS, 0.7, so two and a half teachers, right? I mean, if you go by the matrix, that's about 59,000 for two of the teachers, I'm assuming you're kind of ballparking all those numbers. So out of 176, let's say you've got 150 for the two and a half teachers. I'm assuming the rest of that is just what's built into the matrix, just, you know what I'm saying? So there's $176,000 increase in the proposed budget over what's budgeted for 2016. That includes two and a half teachers, and I'm assuming what's ever baked into the matrix.
Correct.
Okay. So when we look back at 2016, we know from the discussion earlier, at least I think we know, that this is in Hans' report, the second page of Hans' report talks about classroom teachers. 53,732, where we budgeted that for 2016, not knowing that people were going to retire. So we know that we're not going to spend 53,732. So when you look at the FY16 budget versus what we spent in 2015, that difference, and just trust me, was about $92,000. So now we're budgeting 176 over that. So it looks to me like out of that 176, you could take out the amount that we didn't budget, that we know we're not going to use. You know what I mean? We're...
And what are you trying to say?
Okay.
Here's my answer.
Help me.
I will. So I can't, I think that the variance in the salaries are likely more than just teachers retiring after the budget was finalized and new hires that go lower rate. You know, we also have, you're talking about, you're not just talking about regular teacher salaries.
I'm just, I'm talking about that one line item, because then there's specialist, which I'm assuming, there's two specialist lines, but...
You're talking about the Teachers Classroom Line Act, 2,067, 570. That was the FY16 budget?
Well, I'm talking about the top, yeah, the whole line item either way. That's the subtotal, I'm just talking about the classroom. Either way, it's the same, it's the same dollars.
Hopefully, I mean, hopefully the numbers are the same, coming from the same source.
Yeah, 2,067 is the FY16 budget, and of that, classroom teacher salary is 1,586,009. And of that 1,586,009, we know that we're not going to spend 53,732, or if you want to look at the subtotal out of two...
No, so let me address that.
Okay.
I can't tell you what number was used as a base in creating the FY16 teacher salaries. What I can tell you for FY17 is that the FY17 number is based on actual teacher salaries from FY16. So every single person who's in the FY16 budget and is employed at Pine Hill now, we took their actual FY16 salary. If they were moving to a new step, move them to a new step. If they were at the top step, increase their salary by 1.6%, which is what the contract calls for, and that's the number.
So it was built up from bottom up as opposed to being moved across?
And teachers need to pre-alert the superintendent's office if they anticipate moving salary lane.
Which doesn't always happen, right? Sometimes, isn't there sometimes like, I'm going to get a degree, so I'm going to move over? Don't they...
Yes, it doesn't always happen, so we're looking at that also, looking at the last three years, you know, how many moved, how many different, what that average cost was, and looking to see if, again, we can't make an estimate on what that'll be, but again, we...
Frank, didn't we have that for the negotiation? It was like 25, it was an oddly low number, like 25 grand. So I'll flip my question then. If that's the case, then the 176 increase that's listed as the change in the proposed budget doesn't, I still don't know how to account for the 53, 732 and the 35, 022 that we know that we're going to get back, that we budgeted for, that we don't need. And so it seems like instead of 176,000 more, it's going to be 176 plus the 53, plus the 35.
So one of the problems, Greg, is that on the line item budget that you have, classroom teacher salaries for FY16 are budgeted at 1,586,009. Do you have that number?
Yep, I do.
Okay. And then we have a proposed in that change. You can't equate that line with the monthly report line that says teachers' classroom.
Well, either way, it drops down to the bottom budget anyway. It's something that we know that we're not going to spend.
Right.
Right? It's one of the few encumbered items that we know that, we essentially know we overbudgeted, for whatever reason.
Yeah. So all I can tell you is that the FY17 number of 1.762, 605 is based on taking every staff member we have now, moving them forward into next year, and given that, the FLESS, the FLESS increase of 29,000, and the two teachers which we budget at 123,5, that totals about $153,000. So the cost to move everyone else forward to next year is about $23,000.
Okay, so...
That's a true, actual cost.
Right, because we've got, Frank, by end of next year, we're going to have 80% in the bottom right corner of the matrix or something like that, in what we came up with.
About 2/3 of the P from you mean?
Right, teachers. Okay, so, forgive me, but, and this is, so if I look at the proposed FY17 budget relative to what we actually spent in 2015, the functional classroom, the 32, 3, whatever the line item is, the functional teacher classroom, that number is 323,000 more than what we actually spent in 2015. So, and I think from '15 to '16, I'm not sure what the head count did, but that seems like, that just seems like a really large increase, that's almost 17%. I would just like to be able to see where that is. And there are other items sort of like that, but that's the largest, that's sort of the largest one, because we budgeted in 2016, this budget has $320,000 more than what we spent in 2015. That's just in district, that's not out of district. So I just went back and looked at all the different line items, and that salary is about a third of it. Specialist, it's just, I guess I just need help understanding where...
So you're talking about the 23, function 23, 0...
I forgot one of these, I was...
Five. So it's made up of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines, is that right?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines, yes.
And what you're questioning is the proposed, FY17 proposed, 2,269, 398?
Right.
Versus FY15 expended of 1,945, 533?
That's correct.
And you want to know why that 320,000, what's the $320,000 difference?
What's it, yeah, what's it made up of? It would be...
So we know 176 of it...
Right.
Is the change from FY16 to '15.
Right.
I mean, to '17. Yeah, we'll go back and look at that.
We added, obviously, that's the two sections plus the FLESS that you mentioned.
It's the two sections plus the FLESS, it's an additional educational assistant that was added in FY16 that wasn't part of the FY16 budget, and it could be other things. We'll map that out for you.
Okay.
Well, let me put it this way, we'll make an attempt to do that.
Okay. Well, it should be pretty straightforward.
It should be.
And if you don't mind, there's just a couple of other items on there. I mean, it's the, my line item, numbers are off. It says teachers, specialist, 23, 1, 0, maybe. That number, and again, I looked at what, oh, actually, that's just an FY16 issue, the number dropped to FY17. I'm just trying to come to grips with what we actually spent in 2015 relative to what we budgeted, and there's differences. And I know there's always, it's generally higher, right? And then what we're asking for in 2017. The other thing is utilities. On the savings part, you've got 8,000 in electric utilities, and I know that's something you got to budget for, and you've got some contracts for gas prices and those types of things. But in FY14, we spent 119,000, this is total utilities, 4130. We budgeted 150 in 2015, we spent 110. We budgeted 115 in 2016. You're proposing taking eight off the electric utilities, and it looked, and it, you know, you've got heat, you've got electric at $80,000, and it was 51 and 59, but all the utilities total, $40,000, we budgeted in 2016 versus what we spent in 2015. It just seems like more could come off that. I know you can't be too, like, last year was cold and snow and all that kind of stuff, and you may, it may be more cold, but it seems like there would be another, another amount.
So what line item, miss that again, I'm sorry. That's utilities, electric?
41... Well, you have electric, you took it off like 4130 is the total utility.
The total, your total.
Right.
So can I ask, would it make sense to go through and write and specify what the things that you want to see more information?
Well, I could, but it would be great if, I mean, it's like, it's every, every line there's a difference, you know, whether it's positive or negative. I'm just looking at the larger ones, which would seem to add up to a lot. Yes, I could do that.
Well, no, I'm just thinking, so that because Bill can't really, he's noting, but he can't really answer the things now, would it make sense to provide the opportunity for him to find the answers or Hans to help find some of those, what accounts for some of these big differences? And then provide you with more answers as opposed to just noting?
Sure, I'm just looking for general ideas.
Yeah, Greg, you're more, you're provoking thought, right? You're trying to provoke deeper thought into it. Bill, I think we alluded to the process earlier, where when we're looking at the central office summary for the appropriations report, where I think Bill earlier said that they're working on trying to, based on what's expended in encumbrances, to try to predict where we're going to end up for 2016. So, you know, like, that's a great point. We're budgeting something based on numbers we don't even have for this year, so you have to go back two years to get actual, real expenditures. So shall we just include that as another step? So we're trying to see, let's figure out fiscal year '17's estimates based on what we guess we're going to spend for fiscal year '16 to see how far off we are, and then what does that look like compared to '15? So I think this is both, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see where we're going for '16. Now, how close are we to what we budgeted for '16, or how much of an overage or shortfall we're going to see? So that prediction that Bill's working on would be great to see, but relevant to fiscal year '15 expenditures.
But we don't want to exclude anybody in the audience in terms of the budget, because life's in the details, right?
Just one point that may be illuminating, the footnotes, my recollection was jogged when I read, remind you that we went out to bid at a higher, the electric rate that we had been locked into was no longer available. But simultaneous to that, we went energy efficient, thanks to the solar, the Sherborne Energy Grant. So I don't know that we know that what our energy costs are tangibly under the new rate, because both of those things happened simultaneously.
So just to assure you...
And I'm not trying to put anybody on spot, I'm just...
No, I'm fine putting me in the spot, but just to assure you, you know, this is an example of the proposed spreadsheet. You can see notes, we've been going through, as I indicated earlier, we've been scrubbing this line by line, looking at the trend budgeting, at the historical budgeting, the utilities, you know, there were those changes in the contracts, the cost contracts. So we are looking at that very carefully, and there's still some more work to do. You know, and I know that there are some who are interested in getting this process done and coming to a decision, but I see this as an ongoing, evolving process. We keep looking at the numbers, we get some additional information that is helpful, and there's still a few meetings, there's a period of time before, you know, decisions that are going to be brought to town meeting get made. And my mantra in budget development has always been, slow and steady wins the race. We take as much time as we can to get to the number that is both responsible and reasonable. And, you know, some of us like to move a little faster. In this case, I guess I'm a little more like the turtle as opposed to the hare, but...
We're voting this win? We're voting...
Eight to eight.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
So, it doesn't seem like a lot of time. My concern is if we could go to the town or the campus that has an extra section in every class, right? But if we go to the, if we don't have some agreement with advisory, you go to town meeting, you've got advisory over here, you've got selectmen over here, and if we go in with a budget and it fails, I think Sudbury had, Lincoln Sudbury, maybe, Sudbury, a couple of years ago, went to town meeting wanting a $500,000 override, and it failed. And my recollection of reading the articles about it is they let go, this was like June or late May, and they had to let go 10 teachers. So if we go and it's not something that advisory agrees to, and it just doesn't seem like we have a lot of time to work things out, and it fails... we have a lot of time to work things out, and it fails.
That's why I asked the question earlier, because it winds up being maybe cuts that you don't want to make, but you just have to because your back's to the law.
So let me just add one more piece of context, kind of maybe take us full circle. So when I started this about 24 days ago, my explanation, that was a joke.
It's way too late.
So I explained that the first pass budget was $354,000 above advisory's guidance, or a 3.1% increase. Once we calculate in these proposed adjustments that we've just reviewed, that brings, that would bring the budget to, and I find this pretty illuminating. After these adjustments, our budget for FY17 would be $66,856 increase over last year's budget, or 1%. So, we've gone from being $200,000 increase to a $66,000 increase, 3.1% to 1%. I think we've been able, I think these adjustments are adjustments that do not impact, do not impact in any kind of a major way, the program that we had envisioned from the original budget. And I think that, again, if in fact we meet on the 25th, which frankly I hope we do, because there's more work that we've been doing, and I think we can, again, still do a little more work, that has a reasonable number, but maintaining the integrity of the originally proposed budget. And my sense is that as we, then we'll have an opportunity to meet with advisory on March 2nd, and then we come back again on March 8th. So, again, I think that by going through this process, we have a few more meetings, I'm optimistic we'll be at a place where there's reasonable agreement. But, you know, again, we'll know that when we get there, but this is, you know, with these proposed adjustments, this is where we stand. So, it seems to me there's still some discussion regarding circuit breaker, we have to look at that, we'll do some more work on that. I'd be curious to know if there's any real objections to any of those other adjustments that we've proposed.
These right here?
Yeah.
I would be wary of taking circuit breaker up to 70%, but I think 60% makes sense, right? I mean, I don't know what the state's done in the past, maybe it's always been 70, except for the one year it was at 40, but that doesn't leave much leeway for bad experience at the state, so I would be more comfortable with 60.
So, other than the year that it came in at around 40 or 42%, there have been, I'm trying to think how many years back, so there's been an off year when we maybe got a 62, 60-something percent, but it's been pretty consistently for the last few years, coming in at 70 to 73%.
Terry, can you speak to what maybe drove that less-than-expected reimbursement rate?
I'll speak to that.
Maybe it's, again, predicting the future.
No, no, that was directly related to the recession that we went through.
All right.
And however, however, I assume it happened, the same thing happened here, but in most districts, that money was supplemented with IRA funds, if you remember that, the federal IRA money that came in to the tune of, it was, what, $8 billion across the country? And those were funds that were available to be expended over a two-year period. I want to say FY10, FY11, and FY12 were the budget years that all municipalities were greatly impacted by the most recent recession. And we've seen, and we've seen a recovery since then, but I'm pretty sure that since, I want to say FY13, 14, 15, and 16 now, reimbursement has been between 70 and 73%. But we'll go back and double-check that.
Can I just add a note to that? I went to one of the teacher, it was the school committee day on the hills, where school committee meets their senators and congressmen on the hill, and it happened to be one of those years where the budget was a really tight year, that where they say was bringing in a short, a shortfall, too little money for what they had anticipated, yet it was the, basically, the school committees and the superintendents that did a lot of, sort of lobbying for our group, and as a result, they, we didn't get the decrease that was originally anticipated at the beginning of that. So, like what's going on here with our parents coming to talk to us, is what a lot of teachers and school committee and superintendents did back in the day. And, you know, there are, there were a lot of areas of the state budget that went down, but the circuit breaker and the chapter 70 were funded at pretty high levels. So, even in a bad year, that can still happen.
So, can I ask a point of clarification? I think what I just heard, play it back, is that on the circuit breaker issue, and how we protect the school and the town for the possibility that the state will not reverse at expected levels, our history is that except for one year, it's been between 60, 62, and 70, 73%. The one year when it was 40%, it was precipitated by the deepest and most historic recession we've seen in the last 70, 80 years, and the federal government provided bailout money that the town was able to have. So, we've been assuming that we would only get 40% reimbursement from the state over the last couple of years, and potentially for next year, in circuit breaker reimbursement, based on an event that didn't end up having that impact on us, that happened only once, and that was precipitated by a historic and unusual recession. And in that same time period, we've been allowing class sizes to expand in all our grades, we've cut the aides in the kindergarten from three, one each classroom, to a rolling that we've already heard today, has been impacting students this year. As we're considering what budget to recommend to the advisory committee, and eventually the town, I would ask that we take this wrap-up into account as one example of the kind of choices that I think we need to be really considering carefully. And in terms of needing to be balancing fiscal responsibility, which the committee has, the advisory committee has, and the town has, with the needs of the school and the mission of the school and the goals of the town, I want to remind all of you, starts with Dr. Brown, you need to ask for what you need. The school committee needs to ask the advisory committee for what you need, and the advisory committee, if necessary, needs to ask the town, because if the ask isn't made, it doesn't happen. And, you know, the details in the budget, I completely agree, really do matter. I love that the questions are being asked, because it's important to all of us as citizens and taxpayers. But I, you know, I want us, I will stop, but I want us to, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I think this has been very educational tonight.
I would just like to say that I still think there's a disconnect between the money that we, that the school is budgeted for and doesn't spend. It's not our money to hold on to and spend, it's the town's money. And when you look at the other town departments, the school budgets have crowded out the other budgets. So, it goes back to advisory deciding, how should these assets be allocated? They're not, they don't stay with us, they're not ours to necessarily, so when you say, we've been doing it in under budget, we've been too conservative, it's not, it-
I understand, we've, the town has approved a certain amount of money for the school that turns out was based on an over-conservative estimate of the circuit breaker. And what I'm saying is the town agreed that Pine Hill should have X amount of money. And I'm not saying that when we have a surplus, it doesn't go back to the town, it clearly does, but I'm saying the town agreed that that amount of money was the right amount of money. And I'm just saying, when we're talking about choices for how to budget, I think we need to look that the town's been willing to put that money into the school, and we've been not spending it on the school.
My impression also is that there was a history of some bad experience in out-of-district placements before Terry's time. So, it was another budget shock where people had to scramble and find ways to spend the money. So, your summation of our experience here, it may be true, it may not be, I think we'd have to look a little bit further back and see what caused people to say, we need to budget at 40%, because I think there's a history that's before my time, too.
Can I just add that also, budgets in the past have always been created on prior budgets that have been, they're not actuals, so you continue to bring that cushion forward that's been in prior budgets. This year is to, we're changing things, so we're looking at the budgets totally different. So, it's not, prior budgets have been projected, you know, based on what they want to project the year before. So, it goes from one projection to another, and not on actual expenditures. So, there's been monies that have been in there that have continued to carry forward and not used, and those monies have gone back to the town, because they're either OOD money or something. But, there's history here, that the schools have always been given, pretty much, you know, it's, we try to give them as much as we can. I mean, it's just, it's just buckets, you know, they go on different buckets. And there's a lot of state regulation that goes along with that.
How does the budgeting, the actual spending budgeting, how are you accounting for increasing enrollment?
That's, our trend budgeting-
That's the piece that's missing.
Right. Yeah, you're right. So that's why if they come in, I mean, and say, the enrollments are over, this is why we need to go above your guidance based on trends, that's a reasonable assumption for us to look at. But, the way we did trend budgeting, we're saying, historically, this is what we've spent, so this is the way we-
Yeah, because if you really look at where you are versus where the budget's coming in right now, FY17, at 1% over FY16, with two additional classroom teachers and the FLESS program expanding, that's remarkable.
But 1% over, but FY16 was 6%, the in-district budget was 16, excuse me, 6% over the FY15 spend. That's my point, is you can't just say, oh, we're just 1% over this year's budget, because this year's budget is 6% over what we actually spent in district. And I like to take sped out of it, because with circuit breaker and everything, it just kind of muddies the water. So, that's why it's important to look more than just one year, and that's what Vicki is saying, is that, is that 6% being carried through? Has it been carried through in some way? And the other part about the budget and trending for increasing enrollment, although I don't necessarily agree with their projections, when you had enrollment declining by 20% in the budget, and the general ed budget still going up dramatically, it sort of didn't make any sense. And it wasn't, I think that this is a reaction to that, is people kept saying, when's the budget going to flatten out? I mean, we're losing kids left and right, when's it going to, when is it going to change in a downward way? And I think we get used to spending an X amount of money and tacking on another 2 and 1/2 or 3%, when the population's going down, nobody was, nobody was saying anything then.
I'm not sure, especially in that same time, though, didn't we decide as a community, and I think you guys all voted, to do things like add the Spanish program and add other things that were enriching? So while I can appreciate enrollment was going down, this group made the decision to add those kinds of things, which are naturally going to increase the costs, when you would expect all other things being equal, the costs to come down.
I couldn't agree with you more, and that's the issue, is when, and that's what everybody's done, is as property rates were climbing up until 2007, and money was coming in, and we were spending it all, right? And that's why I would argue that we're in a bit of a pickle, because property values or the amount of taxable base per child has flattened since 2007. So, it was going like this for a long time, and people, that's when we, that's when our teachers got, we had seven overrides out of eight years, I think, that was the number. And now, our teachers at Pine Hill are the second most highly compensated in the state, it would be first, except for a couple hundred bucks. That's a year ago, according to state information. So, you know, so we've made choices, we've made choices not to develop anything in town that would give us more tax base. We made the choice not to approve the property on, the development on Maple Street, which would have added arguably $700,000 of taxes to the town, and over 50. We made those choices, we made choices for a long time to have small classrooms, and we've made the choice to pay our teachers almost more than anybody else in the state. That's why, that's why you need to get involved, is because people have been making these choices that have gotten us into, I would argue, a pretty tight spot, and has forced advisory to come back and say, hey, we're almost at 22% in terms of our tax rate, we can only go to 25.
Twenty-two dollars per thousand.
It's 22 dollars per thousand. We can only go to 25. If we get to 25, and our property values don't go up, or maybe they go down, there's going to be bigger choices to make than this, I would argue. So, I'm done, thank you.
One other thing, again, on the trend budgeting, just to, in fiscal year 15, I think, what was the turnback from the school committee? I think it was 400, 500,000, somewhere in that range.
I can't, I don't remember, but it was significant.
Over-budgeting, so by taking the trends, and this is not just the school, the school committee's an example on that. There's other departments that had been budgeted, line items that were not spent year after year after year. So, we're saying, let's get this right-sized. And yes, it's going to be painful in the first year, and it's going to look like we're slashing budgets, but we're really right-sizing, and if there's good explanations for why-
That's the piece, but I just want to make sure you said that.
Okay.
I find it's great, but the younger kids get lost in the right sizing.
And we have, when we looked at doing this trend budgeting, our guidance, we put a much higher reserve this year, knowing that some budgets were not going to work based on the historical trends. So, we do have more monies reserved for items from different budgets that might not work.
And I think it's really, just really important, very quickly, to acknowledge two things. One is that our turnbacks for the last two years were because of situations that were beyond our control, the bulk of it, so that that skewed the trend a little bit, but also the increase in enrollment, which we didn't foresee in the due, so that's why it's a little bit skewed. And I'd like to note that I feel like, though, based on suggestions that Bill made tonight, that we are really doing our best to address, and we were maintaining two new teachers. I do believe that we do need to discuss adding the aide back to kindergarten, which is a discussion that I know has been-
It's built into-
Built into this, okay, so that's built in, so that's something that's also being addressed. So, we're definitely listening. A lot of the things that were actually perceived, I think, even before, well, perceived even before the budget was released. And so, we're continuing to work with advisory to hopefully come up with the best solution that balances choices that have been made in the past, with current situation and choices to make in the future, so that we do what we all really feel is best for the kids, because I think that's really what we all want. Does somebody else have any other thoughts? 20 of 10.
Can I ask a question?
Really? Are you kidding?
No, really, Mr. McAlva, I had a question for him, just kind of about these cuts. You know, the Pine Hill staff, I think, are really great, every interaction I've had with them has been fantastic, but we're talking about postage and paper cuts. In a budget-constrained environment, at a time where, you know, Mr. Moore told us at the beginning, benefits costs go up 13% a year or so, we're talking about a priority, right, having more classroom instructors. Two are built into this proposal, but I think there's a good argument to be made that we need four additional teachers, not just two. And then we're talking about the trade-offs. So, where in this budget are the personnel trade-offs that we can make in order to increase the number of classroom teachers that we'll have, without going back to advisory and asking for, well, here, you're asking for nearly a quarter million more than they want to give us, without asking for even more than that? Where are the trade-offs that we can make?
That assumes that, I'm ready to make a recommendation that the school committee budget more than two classroom teachers, and I'm not at that point yet.
We're even for the two?
I'm sorry?
We're even for the two.
The two are still in the budget.
At 220- At 220,996 over advisory's number, which seems to be something that there are significant voices in town government saying is a number we should stick to.
So there's, we're still doing work on that and at the next meeting, I prepared, I will be prepared to have more information for the school committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's, it's a difficult thing to talk about cutting people or talking about other people's position. I'm with you, right? And I think we need to plan for that. If people are moving in, then if we had another teacher in every grade, then that gives us a little bit of cushion, right? So, so maybe the max is these two and two more or something like that to give us a cushion for a while, maybe till we get back up to, to 470 or something like that. Trust me, I, I'm the biggest skeptic. I think it's going to happen, but it's just hard to do that in a, in a public meeting, I'll just say that.
Well, more than that. So, I mean, I can share, I have a, I have a handwritten list that identifies an additional $395,000 in adjustments. And those adjustments mean people. I just haven't had a chance yet to sit down with the central office and the Pine Hill staff to vet them, talk about them and to see if they're realistic. So once we have an opportunity to do that, we'll talk about that and then we'll see which, which of those cuts makes it to the recommendation for the next meeting. But I would never do that publicly until we have the opportunity to have conversations with individuals whose names might be on that list or who are associated with a position that might be on that list, so.
And the region, region problems are bigger than ours, right? In terms of prioritizing all this.
Yes, but it's all part of, you know, our responsibilities. So time, time is of an issue, but I'm not in any way suggesting however, that I'm going to advocate, A, to meet advisory's number or to, or to, what's the word I'm looking for, implement another $395,000 in cuts. That would severely change education as we know it at Pine Hill and at Sherburne. However, it will be an exercise where all of us take a look at what those priorities are and do we, do we make those hard decisions or do we continue to advocate for a level of funding that is reasonable but continues to meet the, the educational needs of our students going into next year? So again, it goes back to what I talked about earlier about this being an ongoing evolving process that takes multiple steps. And, you know, I'm, it's not my nature to get this done in two nights. It's too important, the decisions are too important to do that.
Mr. McAlve, I'll suggest to you that your scenario, two projections of a-
I'm, I'm sorry, I gotta just stop you there, you've got to be recognized by the chair.
Okay.
Thank you. That's okay. All right, I'm going to suggest that we can move on with the agenda since it's, it's late. And, and that we'll be able to continue discussions because I will, if I jump ahead, then I'm going to suggest that we schedule a possible me, a meeting for February 25th, an additional school committee meeting, to continue the budget discussion. So I'm thinking that that agenda would be budget and also we'll add the vote to the school tuition to that?
Yes.
And just those-
Yes.
Two items unless something else comes up potentially up here, but-
Over here? Over here?
Here. I hope so, I'll have to ask.
Don't know.
Don't know?
Okay.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
And we'll let, and we'll certainly let people know for sure.
On the 25th, there's a Thursday night.
It's a Thursday night, yeah.
So Pine Hill's available if you need backup.
So that meeting will be posted by Thursday of this week.
This week, okay. That'd be great. But is that okay with everybody here?
Yep.
25th, you're good? Want to do this again?
It's on my calendar, already.
Excellent. All right. Can I just quickly then move back up to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
A discussion, on favor?
Aye.
All right, good, unanimous. Got the communications, everyone, folks know about the meeting with advisory on March 2nd. Got March 8th in everyone's calendars? Yes.
Yeah, what's your hearing?
What's your hearing? All right, and we do not need to go into executive session because that was going to-
It was going to be an update on you.
An update on the meeting that we didn't have last-
Because of the snow.
Friday because of the snow. So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.